It is April 5th, 2022, our regular council meeting calling to order. Notice to the public that city council may vote to go into executive session for legal advice on any of the agendized items. Ms. Salzberg, roll call.
Mayor Deasy?
Here.
Vice Mayor Daggett?
Here.
Councilmember Aslan?
Present.
Councilmember McCarthy?
I'll be present today.
Councilmember Salas?
Present.
Councilmember Shimonie?
Present.
Councilmember Sweet?
Here.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Daggett, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Councilmember Shimonie, our mission statement, please?
Thank you, Mayor. The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you. And Councilmember Salas, our land acknowledgement, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm honored to do so. The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of these areas Indigenous Nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by Native descendants, border mountains sacred to Indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations, who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you. That brings us to agenda item number four, our public participation, and we do have one. It's Kaylee Wells.
My name is Kaylee Wells. There you go. Is this better? Okay.
Yeah, good.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is Kaylee Wells, Sustainability Specialist. Last fall, the Sustainability Office and Solid Waste provided council with an update on Trash Less, Save More and the Residential Food Scraps Drop-Off Program. During that meeting, council requested staff to develop QR code stickers on residential recycling bins that allow community members to learn more about what is recyclable. I'm pleased to share with the council that the stickers are ready. When scanned with a smartphone, the QR code leads residents to Flagstaff Recycle by City website, which contains a recycling guide, recycling quiz, and allows residents to sign up for recycling pickup service reminders. The Sustainability Office ordered 5,000 stickers for the first round of implementation and plan on purchasing additional stickers to place on every residential recycling bin in the city. Working with our partners at Solid Waste, we anticipate that every residential recycling bin will have a sticker by this November. I provided the city clerk with QR code stickers, and they should be in front of you, for you to place on your recycling bins at home, so that you too can learn more about recycling in our community and support the goals of the Carbon Neutrality Plan by diverting more waste from the landfill. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. This is awesome. We have another public participant, Elson Miles.
Do you want to take this off while I talk?
Yeah, either way, you like.
Anyway, my name's Elson Miles, longtime Flagstaff resident, and I don't really know why I'm here, except I've been here so many years that I finally feel like I should give you all information about my vast experiences. Anyway, 50-year resident of this town, and I'd just like to make some comments on the growing traffic congestion that our town is experiencing. I've been spending our last eight winters in south of the border in a little town called Alamos Sonora. It's a little colonial mining town in the foothills of the Sierra Madre, and it was built 300 years before the advent of the automobile. So it's basically little narrow one-way streets, cobblestone streets. It's people space, and it's been designated by the federal government as a Pueblo Magico, which denotes tourism. It's a very popular tourist town because of the cars can only go 15 miles an hour, they're one-lane streets. But the interesting thing is, as much as the automobile has been restricted there and never planned for, the cars still get from A to B, and these incredibly big tourist buses navigate these little tiny narrow streets. It's pretty amazing to see it all happen. And so anyway, I get to spend my winters in a town that is people-friendly and not car-centric. And I immediately realized that, having been here for 50 years, I've seen a lot of changes in Flagstaff. Butler Avenue was a dirt road that didn't even make it to east Flagstaff, and a lot of situations like that. But I just had some thoughts on what we could do. I know there's, to me, it seems like even though we talk about being green and reducing our impact, our town is still very car-centrically oriented. Our engineering department is building, planning more four-lane roads, $280 million bridge, $18 million roundabouts, and that's all for the benefit of the automobile, not the human being. I mean, I guess as I came down here, I was looking at the traffic, and 90% of the cars have one person in them. So I had a couple of thoughts that I'd like to pass on, and then I'll let you go on with your meeting. One is that we need to restrict, or I can't say ban, but not build any more four-lane roads. Four-lane roads eventually become six-lane roads. And right now, what I've noticed is, on a four-lane road, it's either a racetrack, or there's always somebody passing somebody, or right now, Butler Avenue is a parking lot between Milton and almost a lone tree. And so what I would recommend is two-lane roads. When you get to an intersection, then you can have your left turn and your straight through and your right turn, but there's no reason to have four-lane roads. My time's up? Oh, dear.
Yes, sir. Unfortunately.
Can I have another 30 seconds?
Unfortunately, not based on rules of procedures, but you're welcome to.
Come back next time and finish.
Yeah, we have, also, you can email us at council@flagstaffaz.gov.
I'll do that, then.
And every, I mean, we have bike pad and infrastructure discussions every few weeks, and I would love to get your input on specific projects and how we can better incorporate that.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. With that, we are down to agenda item number five, consideration and acceptance, resignation of Vice Mayor Becky Daggett effective April 4th, 2022. And I'm not sure how to address this situation, if it's a formal vote, or how, you know, it's my first.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Stacey Salzberg, City Clerk. There is no formal presentation for this item. It is really for you as council to consider. Yes, you would need a formal motion and vote to accept the resignation effective April 4th.
Excellent. All right. Well, then, with that, I'll happy to entertain a motion.
Well, with some regret and some excitement, or I don't know what, I move that we accept Ms. Daggett's resignation from council. We will miss you.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilmember McCarthy, seconded by Councilmember Shimonie. Any further discussion?
Mayor?
Yes, sir. Shimonie?
I put a C in the, thank you, I put a C in the chat, so I'll make sure you saw that. Vice Mayor, I'm just gonna say thank you again. I, as a fellow elected, so appreciate others who put themselves out there and go through the process of getting elected, and gosh, to get elected as Vice Mayor, I'm so proud of you and so, so happy with what you've done for us in the community, and just wish you well on your future endeavors. Thank you for your service, and you will be missed.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimonie. Any further discussion? Councilmember Sweet?
Thank you. I just want to echo what Councilmember Shimonie said. Thank you, and your service on council has taught me so much, and you definitely will be missed. Thank you.
You, Councilmember Sweet. Councilmember McCarthy?
Take your name tag. No one else will have the same name, so.
I have something to read whenever it's appropriate to do that.
Yeah, you're more than welcome to now before we, yeah, make a final vote.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate this opportunity. I've written some things, because I knew that I would never be able to remember to say everything if I didn't. As I step down as Vice Mayor, I want to take this opportunity to thank my colleagues on the council and cities, and the city's outstanding staff. I've been active in policymaking for many years, and I love the process of identifying a problem and working together to solve it. I appreciate the different perspectives you, my fellow council members, bring to our discussions, and I want to express my gratitude for what you've taught me through our discussions and deliberations. I extend my gratitude to the city's staff for their patience with my endless questions. That's for you, Sterling. Your professionalism in the face of significant pressures and for your excellent work. I'm consistently impressed with you and feel fortunate to work with you. I also want to thank the public for being engaged in the future of our community. Thank you for taking the time to write and call me and attend meetings. Thank you to each of you who has helped me see an issue from a different perspective, and thank you to all the volunteers who give countless hours to our commissions. Running for mayor wasn't a decision that I made lightly, and I've appreciated your support of my decisions. It was an honor to be elected to the city council, and it's been my privilege to serve our community in this capacity. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And, yeah, with that, we have a motion on the table. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Thank you, Vice Mayor. And with that, we are, oh, Vice Mayor, I forgot your tag thing. Right, with that, we are down to agenda item number six, the selection of Vice Mayor. And I will just note, the city council rules of procedures, our rule 6.03, states that the candidate with the highest number of votes in the most recent general candidate election shall be appointed Vice Mayor until the next general candidate election. If or for whatever reason the Vice Mayor cannot fulfill their term, the position will be transferred to the candidate with the next highest number of votes in the most recent general candidate election. Councilmember Salas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm honored to appoint Councilmember Miranda Sweet as our Vice Mayor.
I second that. I'll beat you to the punch. I don't have to press the button.
I third that.
Any further discussion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Shimonie?
Not sure how to best get your attention here, but I'll try. Thank you. I just wanted to say to Councilmember Sweet, it's been really fun watching you grow into this position, and as you evolve into the position of Vice Mayor, I'm just so grateful for your service and excited for you and for the city with you as our Vice Mayor. It's gonna be a lot of fun, and I know you're up for the task, and you're taking it very seriously, and I just appreciate that. Thank you.
You, Councilmember Shimonie. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
You get a vote for yourself?
Aye.
That carries unanimously. Well, Councilmember Sweet, would you like to take the seat of the Vice Mayor tonight?
I would be honored, and I do want to just thank everyone for believing in me and giving me this opportunity. I do take it very seriously, and we'll do our community well, I promise. Thank you.
And with that, we also will be, we're moving down here to agenda item seven, which is our proclamations and recognitions. We do have three of them tonight, starting with the Coconino Community College 30th anniversary. So, Council, if we wanted to move up front here, and those from CCC are welcome to come on down. All the cool kids. Yeah.
I should have warm teals today.
Well, Coconino Community College marks its 30-year anniversary, providing an opportunity for Flagstaff citizens to reflect on its impact on the educational success and economic development of its citizens. And with more than 100,000 students attending Coconino Community College since 1991, Coconino Community College's faculty, students, and staff contribute to the overall well-being of our community through affordable and accessible education. Coconino Community College offers transferable credits to all Arizona universities, certificate programs providing the community with well-trained employees, and is an educational resource for lifelong learning. Coconino Community College represents our community's commitment to supporting education for all ages and ethnicities. Coconino Community College serves as a designated Native American, non-tribal-serving educational institution. The City of Flagstaff celebrates Coconino Community College's accomplishments and promotes its success in the coming years. Now therefore, I, Mayor Paul Deasy, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the week of April 4th, 2022, as Coconino Community College Week. And Dr. Smith, or anyone else, if you'd like to say a few words, you're more than welcome to. And, oh, we need to get the photo up like this, though, too. Yeah. Something like that. Ask the photography, he knows best.
Mayor Deasy, members of the council, and friends and neighbors from throughout Flagstaff, thank you so much for this proclamation and for acknowledging and honoring Coconino Community College and the work that we do, not only throughout Flagstaff, but throughout our county. You may not know, but April is Community College Month throughout the nation, and so what a wonderful time to be acknowledged for our work as a community college. We've been working hard to try to serve our communities all throughout Coconino County, and we so much appreciate your partnership in all that we do. So, thank you. Thank you.
And we have, we have a fun one coming up here now, too. Trace, do you want to, do you want to come on up? So, April is National Kite Month, organized by the American Kite Flyers Association, celebrating the history, artistry, and future of the world's favorite pastime by sharing the joy of kites. Flying kites crosses cultures, generations, age groups, social groups, and provides a real sense of freedom. Flagstaff Kite Day encourages our community and visitors to spend time in nature, enjoying springtime winds, fresh air, and the outdoors. Flagstaff Kite Day showcases Flagstaff's commitment to open space and sustainable efforts, using wind as clean energy for outdoor fun. And kite flying improves overall health and fitness, boosting energy and cardiovascular activity to help get the heart rate up with sprinting, running, and walking exercises. The uplifting proven health benefits include reduced stress and tension of everyday life, creating mindfulness and boosting creative thinking. Kites are beautiful and fun to watch for all ages, and a great educational tool for children to build skills and learn math, colors, shapes, and even physics. And April is the windiest month in Flagstaff, with an average wind speed of 15.2 miles per hour. The long-range weather predictions of the Farmer's Almanac report, the second Saturday of every April, aided Flagstaff to have the highest wind speed, making the City of Flagstaff a perfect designation, destination for kite flying. Now therefore, I, Mayor Deasy, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, Arizona, hereby proclaim Flagstaff Kite Day is every second Saturday during the month of April. And I will note, too, that when I was in Afghanistan, they actually put glass in the thread, and they battle with their kites, and they try to cut them down, and they make nets on it and such. It's pretty cool. I got some string that cut my finger, but, side note. Anyways, Trace, if you wanted to say a few words?
Sure. Mayor, Council, Vice Mayor, Trace Ward, CVB Director, so thank you for celebrating Kite Day. We're celebrating the pollinating winds of April here in Flagstaff and celebrating the health and fitness of our community. So I do want to say really quickly that there is a purveyor, a business here in town that is stocking up on their kites, and I want to give them a shout-out. So it's the Book Nest, okay? Be sure to go there. It's at 2634 North Steve's Boulevard here in Flagstaff, so be sure to go check them out and buy a kite. Thank you.
Thank you, Trace. Should we hold this? Yeah. Excellent. Thank you. Excellent. Last but not least, we have our First Things First. If you want to come down. So, the week of the young child. All young children deserve quality early learning environments that support them as capable and competent lifelong learners. Nurture parenting, quality and accessible childcare, and early education programs build strong brains during the critical years from birth to age five. And investments in babies and young children has profound impacts on creating a strong and vibrant community. First Things First, Arizona Association for the Education of Young Children and other community organizations, in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children, are celebrating the 51st anniversary of the week of the young child. These organizations are working to improve equitable early learning opportunities, including early literacy programs that can provide a foundation of learning for children in Flagstaff, Arizona. And early childhood educators and others who make a difference in the lives of young children deserve thanks and recognition. Public policies that support early learning for all young children are crucial to the future of Arizona's young children, families, and communities. Now therefore, I, Paul Deasy, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, do hereby proclaim April 2nd through April 8th, 2022, as the week of the young child in Flagstaff, Arizona, and encourage all citizens to support and invest in early childhood education in our community. Beth, do you want to say a few words?
Well, thank, yeah, first, thank you. Thank you so much, Council and Mayor, and thanks. It's so nice meeting you. Last year, we met with a different situation, remember? I think I can hear. Thank you so much for your support, and thanks, everyone. We try to do whatever we can to make sure that we get quality care and quality education to the youngest of our little ones, so thank you, and, funny, you know, I don't know. Ginny, you want to say anything?
No, thank you so much, and yeah, just for supporting it.
Supporting teachers, yeah. Yeah, go preschool teachers.
Great.
Thank you. Thanks so much. See you later this week. Thank you so much.
All right. With that, we are down to our agenda item number eight, which is our COVID-19 update. And deputy city managers setting up shop here.
Yes, thank you. Give me just one moment.
Yeah. It's trying hard.
Yeah. It's thinking. It's thinking, do I want to work, or maybe not?
Okay.
And then no news is good news, so it seems like good news with COVID-19.
No HDMI. Oh, it says it's sharing. Let me try something. Do you want me to unplug this?
This is my first time without a mask on in chambers. Feels weird.
Because usually I just plug in that part. Let's try that. Okay. There we go.
Ta-da.
Yay. You just had to see my dog first.
Highlight of the evening.
All right. So thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, my name is Shannon Anderson. For those in the community who may not know me, I am one of the deputy city managers. Today, we have our COVID-19 update to review. It will include our data points from Coconino County Health and Human Services, Northern Arizona Healthcare, and then an update from Navajo Nation, our Hopi tribe. Rose will also go over the Indigenous Nations update, and then we just have some brief reminders on our reopening of city facilities, given that's next week. So when we look at our weekly cases, most recently here in March 26, the data shows we've got 36 new COVID cases. This is up slightly from the week prior at 27. Looking at the Flagstaff area, we've got a 28.7% positivity yield for COVID cases weekending March 26. Hospital admissions, this chart looks a little different than what we've been seeing, but the updated weekly report includes hospitalization in a different view. We do have fewer residents hospitalized due to COVID-19, so that's a positive message. We've gone down from seven to five this week. The majority of these COVID patients are now 65 and older with this most recent weekly report, which compares to the prior week, we were looking at the age group of 20 to 44. So there has been a change there. When we look at our COVID-19-related deaths, we've had zero deaths reported for this most recent week, but we did have one more reported for the week prior, for a total of three. Looking at our community transmission, as well as our community level, we did see an increase in our rate per 100,000. We refer to that as our incident rate. It increased from 18.4 to 25.4, as you see on the screen. Our positivity rate did go down from 2.2% to the 1.6% on the screen before us. And then lastly, our COVID-like illness has also decreased from 2.7% to the 2.0% that you see on the far-right gray box. Moving down to the community levels, we are still in the low community level. That dropped from medium a few weeks back, so we are reporting fewer than 200 new cases. So, our variants of concern, this chart probably looks a little different as well. We're used to seeing a list of about six. It's been reduced to the two variants of concern that we've had over the last several months, which is our Delta and our Omicron. Looking at our Northern Arizona Healthcare stats for our Flagstaff Medical Center, we do have a decrease in our number of positive patients from eight to six. We now have zero pending COVID patients. Our number of hospital beds has decreased by eight to 56 beds, and our critical care beds has increased by four to nine. So, here's where I'm going to turn it over to Rose, and she's going to go over Indigenous Nations update. Hi, Rose.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you, Shannon, and Mayor and Council, and staff that are in attendance, as well as the public. We're going to go ahead and go over the Navajo Nation's numbers. Right now, in the past 21 days, the changes have been that testing has increased by 7,083, and then negative cases are also 6,286. Confirmed cases have been lower at 361, and then recoveries, of course, are still growing, 426. Deaths have, I think, really jumped in the past few weeks, which is 77, and it used to be more closer to the 50s or lower. So, that's been a concern. For the next one, for Hopi, there are the, the total cumulative positive totals is at 2,638, which is an increase of 29. And then also, the 14-day active cases are at 18, and which decreased by 10, which is great. And then the seven, the seven-day active cases are at nine previously. It was not reported, so we don't have a comparison there. And then over 6,123 people have been vaccinated, according to the Hopi website. And then, as far as the Indigenous Nations data, Navajo Nation is at, of the 3,609 samples tested for, or Delta variant, and that was at 41.7%. Of those samples, 42.9 is, samples are, were tested for, were at, were Omicron variant. Of course, the safer at home requirements are still in effect, and that remains the same as, so the public health emergency orders for schools and businesses are also, will continue at this time. The health advisory for seven communities, which is way down, 17, decreased by 17. And then, of course, there was also the signing of, a ceremony that was, was, the signing happened to thank Navajo Area Indian Health Services, medical providers, and frontline workers. And this was really just to thank them and to recognize them for your, for their value and their commitment and the work that they've done for people out on Navajo Nation, and just a really heartfelt ceremony that took place. And then next, on for Hopi, the, the effective return to work was done for March 3rd, and that was for the Phase Three reopening. And this is really good news, resumed the public interactions, as well as maintaining physical distance. Of course, men, face masks are still needed and are also still being enforced, as far as mandatory usage of them. Minimized exposure in the social settings are also, are still happening, and a lot of the ceremonies are, are really recognizing that, that minimizing exposure is really important now that spring is here and there's more ceremonies that are going to be going on. So, that's really important. And then, the last part is something I really just wanted to highlight. That is the reflection of the pandemic over the past two months with Hopi. And I just wanted to just express here, and this is going to take a little bit of time, this is regarding the local response to the global pandemic by, by Hopi and their eyes in the past two years. And this was written by one of their media specialists. And it talked about how every storm begins with one gust of wind, and every flood begins with a single drop of rain. And they talk about how on March 30th, 2020, the Hopi Tribe became part of the global pandemic with the report of the first case of COVID-19 in the village of Bakabe, sorry. The understanding that every disaster is local, and that this meant that, whether it be the state, nation, or in the, in the case, in this case, the entire world, the way to strategize was to respond at a local level, and that was what was most effective. Then on March 18, 2020, the public emergency was declared in Hopi Tribe, and the Hopi Emergency Response Team was, was enacted. And four days later, on March 22nd, on 2020, the tribe, Hopi Tribe, received notification that three confirmed cases were into the city. This led to the stay-at-home order for all residents, and all travel was halted across Hopi lands. There were 100 cases in the, on the Hopi Reservation in the month of July 2020, and hospitalization rate was average at more than 20 patients per day. So, they saw this as a war of a community against a virus, and then the battles were between the medical community and the individuals fighting against a deadly disease. By June 20th, a nightly curfew was enacted into the, to effect throughout the whole Hopi Reservation. And two years, so in two years, a total of six stay-at-home orders have been issued. And then, so while the, this is where I'll do a little bit of reading, while, while the protection of the public health requires a focus on numerical data. What cannot be forgotten is that behind every number is a person, and behind every person affected is a family, some doing their best to prevent the spread of disease within their house, household, some mourning the loss of their parent or grandparent. And behind all these stories are the men and women who, day in and day out, whether the, whether the positivity rate is high or not, masked up and served, and served as doctors, nurses, and staff, and first responders to keep the battle lines drawn. They worked tirelessly behind the scenes to ensure that there is hope for each patient who may, who, who many times cannot be comforted by their loved ones due to safety protocols. And the Hopi, and the Hopi said that as we reach this milestone in this pandemic, we salute those brave men and women who often provided more than they ever knew they had within them during this time of disaster. Thank you for the extra time, Mayor and Council, and everyone in attendance.
Thank you so much, Rose, for your reflections. We look at these slides all the time and look at numbers, and bringing these stories and reflecting on it is really important for all of us.
So, we've got one more, oops. We've got one more slide for you, Mayor and Council. Just some reminders about what to expect as we reopen our city facilities as we're moving into Phase Four of the reentry plan. We'll be moving to regular operating hours this coming Monday. Staffing, we are still working on filling some very important vacancies within our work groups. As you've probably heard from many organizations in our community, recruitment has become more challenging than ever. We're no different when it comes to that, and so we're continuing to work towards getting the staffing we need to be sure that there's someone available during all of those operating hours. We will continue as city staff to monitor any changes in COVID transmissions. We'll have one more COVID update for you through the month of April, and then we'll move to more irregular updates, reporting only things that maybe are a more substantial change. The next is encouraging hybrid meetings. Again, we're continuing to do this because we've seen that that flexibility allows us to achieve more great things when folks are able to participate on Microsoft Teams or attend in person, whichever works best for their schedule. City staff is continuing to update our flexible work schedule policies. You'll be seeing some of this information come forward to you during your April 19th meeting. And then the last piece is the travel and event restrictions that were in previous phases have been lifted, so you will no longer see those in Phase Four. So certainly, we stand ready to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager. Any questions, Council?
Mayor, I have a question.
Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you very much. Um, are, I'm sorry if I missed this, but are we going to reduce the number of times per month that we get COVID updates during council meetings now?
Yes, we'll have one more update for you in April, and then after that, we will only come to Council with updates if there are more substantial changes.
That sounds great to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You, Councilmember Aslan. Councilmember Shimon?
Thank you. Hi. Oh, well, I'm so, oh, um, yeah, Deputy City Manager, a quick, so, I mean, is it safe to say that we're expecting another wave, looking at the BA2 variant? Are we, are we tracking that? Do we have any thoughts about that?
So, Councilmember Shimon, we do have our COVID call with Coquenino County Health and Human Services still scheduled on a monthly basis. So, as we start to see numbers either approach closer to Arizona or the western states, we usually get updates through those calls. We can also watch the CDC website, the link that we provide for the variants of concern. Also, we'll have information that they're learning about any new strands.
Okay. My, I'm fine with that. My only concern, Deputy City Manager and Mayor and Council, is, is that the data typically lags. So, I appreciate about, you know, your point about looking at adjacent states, but even, yeah, it's concerning. I'm not saying we should go back into lockdown, I'm not saying we need to start requiring masks, but I just want us to be prepared for that and not to just totally let our guard down, while knowing there's another wave on its way, likely in, you know, a handful of weeks, unfortunately, right? But I just want to make sure we have our eyes open as we're heading into that because of the staffing shortages and struggles. You know, I want to make sure our staff is as healthy as it can be to show up for work, and knowing that it's even more transmissible than Omicron by like 60%. Anyways, just want to put that out there, and I look forward to our next update. I do have some concerns about us going to a more irregular frequency as we're heading into a wave, but I know that staff will be bringing this forward as, as needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimon. I had one question, actually, in that regard, which was, is the county or Department of Health going to be testing the difference between the standard Omicron versus the BA2 variant? Are we going to be able to start seeing the breakdowns of, you know, apparently, it came into Arizona March 16th, and I'm just a little interested in if we're going to be able to get a little more dissected information in the future.
So, they did do that with, is it Epsilon? Is that how you say it?
Epsilon.
Previously, there were two different strands and not reported separately when we looked at those variants of concern. So, I would imagine that it's going to take that same track while they break it up on the two lines, so you'll see more than one for that particular variant.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I'm supportive of the method of doing one more in April, and then as needed, just as we know with staff, you all are very quick to the punch if there are concerns that arise, so it'll always still be available to get an update if necessary in the future, so.
Yes, we'll continue to see the weekly reports, so as we start to see something that might become of concern, we'll make sure we're getting that in front of you.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. With that, we are down to Agenda Item Nine, which is our Council Liaison Reports. And I will, let's do it in roll call order. So, Councilmember Aslan?
I don't have anything prepared for this afternoon.
All right. Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. I just might mention that Metro Plan, and I'll back up for a minute, Metro Plan is the organization of city leaders, county leaders. We have a rep from the Mountain Line, and we have a state representative. Anyway, they're involved in transportation, planning for the, the region, Greater Flagstaff. And traditionally, we've been meeting on Wednesdays in the morning, but now we're changing to the first Thursday of the month at 1:00. And so, that's when we will be meeting this week. Just thought I might mention that if anybody's following it, that the schedule is slightly changed now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Solis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, the Flagstaff Sisters Cities had its first-ever in-person meeting after being incorporated, and it was also our annual meeting. And thank you, Mayor, for, for showing up and, and giving us courage to continue with our Flagstaff Sisters Cities International Program. And we had an amazing guest speaker, Twilstaf Stent from, from Belgium. He is actually working with the Greater Finnish Economic Council, and also, also promoting Northern Arizona in Belgium as part of business attraction and economic, economic vitality, as well as a potential sister city in Belgium. Keep our fingers crossed on that. Couple of weeks ago, the Parks and Recreation conducted their meeting the day before the Parks and Recreation Commission had a presentation to the Council, so you are familiar with the Parks and Recreation's priorities and, and the busy schedule they have. I also want to give a shout out to our, our regional planner, Sarah Datter, Sarah Datter had presented to the Parks and Recreation Commission, as well as the Tourism Commission, and Airport Commission, like the initial, initial engagement with the different commissions as, as our city moved forward with the regional planning process. And I have a good news. On behalf of the Rural Transportation Advocacy Council, for which I represent, Metro Plan, the good news is that House Bill 2396, which has, which asked for a one-time funding of $50 million to, to 36 projects in rural Arizona, has been revived. So, we may have $2.6 million for laundry overpass. Keep our fingers crossed, because we have a great advocate in Senate President Karen Fan, who's moving forward with this House Bill, and in support of the majority leader and the whip at the Senate. So, $2.6 million for laundry. Not bad, hopefully. Keep our finger crossed.
Thank you, Councilmembers Solis. Councilmember Shimon?
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, everybody. Good to be with you. Couple of things. So, yesterday, we had our 911 diversion group meeting. We Arizona in Belgium as part of business attraction and economic vitality, as well as a potential sister city in Belgium. Keep our fingers crossed on that. Couple of weeks ago, the Parks and Recreation Commission conducted their meeting the day before the Parks and Recreation Commission had a presentation to the council, so you are familiar with the Parks and Recreation's priorities and the busy schedule they have. I also want to give a shout out to our regional planner, Sarah Datter. Sarah Datter had presented to the Parks and Recreation Commission, as well as the Tourism Commission and Airport Commission, like the initial engagement with the different commissions as our city moved forward with the regional planning process. And I have a good news. On behalf of the Rural Transportation Advocacy Council, for which I represent, Metro Plan, the good news is that House Bill 2396, which has, which asked for a one-time funding of $50 million to 36 projects in rural Arizona, has been revived. So we may have $2.6 million for loan tree overpass. Keep our fingers crossed, because we have a great advocate in Senate President Karen Fan, who's moving forward with this House bill and in support of the majority leader and the whip at the Senate. So, $2.6 million for loan tree. Not bad, hopefully. Keep our finger crossed.
Thank you, Councilmembers Solis. Councilmember Shmoni?
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, everybody. Good to be with you. Couple of things. So yesterday, we had our 911 diversion group meeting with CRN down at the state level, Taros here in Flagstaff, Health Choice Representative, and obviously our police department. And Mayor, you did join us as well. And Matt presented on the data that he got from the call volume from our police department, and Matt's with the CRN Crisis Response Network at the state level. And I just want to thank both Matt at CRN, along with Katie Brandis, our own Katie Brandis, with our dispatch for their time and energy in that group, and then the effort to identify what is divertable and working towards diversion. And so it's very exciting. And again, just, you know, it took a lot of work to get to this point, so it was months in the making. And I want to just wish all the telecommunications, I guess National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, I believe is next week, and I just want to thank all of our dispatch. You do tremendous work, and going through the call logs was pretty eye-opening for myself. Indigenous Commissions meeting tomorrow from 11:00 a.m. till 1:00 p.m. The Transportation Committee Commission meeting is also meeting tomorrow from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. And then on Thursday, the Bicycle Advisory Committee meets from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shmoni. Councilmember Sweet?
Nothing new for me today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sweet. And my two colleagues mentioned the ones that I was going to mention, so thank you for taking that, and we can move on. With that, we will get to our liquor license public hearings, and I'm going to take all three of these all together, if that's all right with Sterling. He's nodding his head. I got a thumbs up. Well, this is the Consideration and Action on Liquor License Applications Christian Sheffield Day of Sky Island kombucha at 1515 North Main Street, Andrea Lukowitz at the Hyatt Place Flagstaff at 397 South Mopius Lane, and Javier Magallanes Melendez of Bow Wow Street Dogs and Grill at 1,000 North Humphreys Number 243. I am now officially opening the public hearing, and yeah, we want to start with our, just confirming no derogatory remarks or anything else in the assessment, and we can make this quick, probably. Oh, you are on mute.
Good afternoon, staff and council and the mayor. I found no derogatory records for any of the applicants or the applications.
Excellent. If any applicants would like to speak, otherwise, I'm happy to move forward and close it and put in a motion. Do we have any requests from the applicants to speak? All right. Any questions from council? Not seeing any. Well, then let us close the public hearing, and I move to approve all of the, or I move to forward the application in the state with the recommendation for approval. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Sweet. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. All right. We are down to Agenda Item 11, our consent items, and I move to approve all consent items as written.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember McCarthy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That carries unanimously. This brings us to our regular agenda items. Agenda Item 12A, Consideration and Adoption of Resolution Number 2022-09, Resolution of the Flagstaff City Council Approving an Intergovernmental Agreement Between Coconino County and the City of Flagstaff for Prescribed Fire Operations. Staff recommended action is to read Resolution Number 2022-09 by title only. Mr. Chapman?
We do not have a formal presentation, Mayor and Council, for this agenda item. This is to renew a prescribed fire agreement with Coconino County. I'm here to happily answer any questions if you guys have them.
Thank you. I move to read Resolution Number 2022-09 by title only.
I'll second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Sweet. Yeah, this is the first time I've gotten to see that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council Approving an Intergovernmental Agreement Between Coconino County and the City of Flagstaff for Prescribed Fire Operations.
Thank you. I move to adopt Resolution Number 2022-09.
I second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Sweet. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Agenda Item 12B is the Consideration and Adoption of Resolution Number 2022-11, a Resolution of Flagstaff City Council Authorizing the Grant Agreement for an Arizona State Parks Heritage Fund Environmental Education Grant. Staff recommended action is to read Resolution Number 2022-11 by title only. Excellent. It's an awesome pick.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Robert Wallace. I'm the Open Space Specialist for the City of Flagstaff. It's really great to be here with you this evening, especially to share some good news. I'm here seeking approval for a resolution and grant agreement with Arizona State Parks that will enable us to accept heritage grant funds, which will allow us to continue and expand our environmental outdoor education program and educational opportunities. The Open Space Program is a team of two, one full-time equivalent, that is myself, and one full-time volunteer, my colleague Sylvia Struce, and our small team has an optimistic attitude. Collectively, collaborate extensively with volunteers and our granters to achieve open space objectives, to make sure that our open spaces are places that people can enjoy and continue to have higher learning opportunities as well. As you may know, the Open Space Program manages about 3,000 acres of open space. That includes the locations that you see here on the map. In addition to property management, the program's mission also entails community planning, partnership coordination, equitable access, and the reason I'm here tonight, the community health and education opportunities. With our small team and partners and a base budget of $39,500, we accomplish a lot. So far this fiscal year, we have worked with partners to provide 775 students and 382 adults with outdoor educational programming opportunities. We are able to support the community in this way through reliance on AmeriCorps Vista Program, which provides us with our full-time volunteer at 35 hours a week. We are seeking ways to continue this current service level, and since the Vista Program is designed to provide support and capacity building for approximately three years, we have already exceeded that number of allowed years. So this new funding opportunity through the state of Arizona will enable the Open Space Program to continue this outdoor educational program by providing about $50,000 in funding for a position to focus on efforts to provide educational programming and resources to indigenous and historically underrepresented youth. So what will the grant achieve? The grant will be utilized to support staffing for outdoor environmental education and programming. So approving the resolution and grant agreement will contribute $50,000 for a part-time position based on a 35-hour per week and at a rate around $25 an hour for one year. We will complete a number of objectives if funded. We will create outdoor lessons and provide learning opportunities for middle and high school students. We'll provide outdoor community programs for the general public. We'll increase the representation of underprivileged community members through encouragement campaigns, and we'll increase volunteer capacity to help us conduct community education. So what are we agreeing to? We are responsible for completing the resolution and the signed grant agreement that you've been provided for your review. We will contribute a $5,500 match, which has been budgeted from the Open Space Base Budget to continue a partnership with Willabend Environmental Center for Conducting Environmental Educational Programming for third graders, thus allowing the grant funds to be dedicated for older students. We'll submit a detailed status quarterly report, and we'll submit program deliverables throughout the grant. So how will the grant acceptance meet city goals? Well, it helps us maintain and expand our current service level, including our section goals that you see here, volunteer management, educational and recreational activities, facilitation and partnerships, providing service to underprivileged populations, promoting responsible tourism, and securing funding for, through grants. It also will support community goals, including supporting all seven of the priority-based budgeting priorities, excuse me, and will contribute to a number of carbon neutrality plan strategies as well. And the options for consideration tonight would be to adopt the resolution and authorize the grant agreement, which will permit grant funds in the amount of $50,000 with a $5,500 city match, and this option will allow us to implement those outdoor environmental programs for the community. And option B would be to not adopt the resolution and not to, that would not authorize the grant agreement, thus declining the grant funding. That's all I have for you. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
This is super cool. Council, do we have any questions? Well, then I move to read Resolution Number 2022-11 by title only.
I second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Shmoni. You beat him to the punch. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Thank you.
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council Approving the Grant Agreement for an Arizona State Parks Heritage Fund Environmental Education Grant.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2022-11. Seconded by Councilmember McCarthy. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That carries unanimously. All right. We are down to Agenda Item Number 12C, a Consideration and Adoption of Resolution Number 2022-13, Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement Between Mountain Line and the City of Flagstaff for Project Management of the First Mile Last Mile Grant. Staff recommended action is to read Resolution Number 2022-13 by title only. Mr. Intz?
Thank you, Your Honor, Members of the Council. My name is Martin Intz. I'm the Multimodal Transportation Planner for the city. This IGA is for agreement between the city and Mountain Line. It will define roles and responsibilities for administration of the First Mile Last Mile Grant. That grant, as you may recall, is a five-and-a-half-million-dollar federal grant that was received, secured by Mountain Line, and it is for support of pedestrian and bicycle projects that support transit. The city and Mountain Line have met a number of times over the last few months to work out some of the details for the IGA and the grant. In short, the city will be responsible for delivering ped and bike improvements as capital projects, and Mountain Line will be responsible for the overall administration and management of the grant. I'll conclude there with my comments, but before we field your comments and questions, I'd like to introduce Estella Hollander, who is the Mobility Planner for Mountain Line.
Thank you, Martin, and Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. My name is Estella Hollander, and I'm the Mobility Planner with Mountain Line. Mountain Line just wants to express our excitement, as well as our support, for this partnership. And through this partnership, we can leverage the 419 funds and bring more money to this community to build more bike and pedestrian infrastructure. Just want to reiterate the importance of bike and pedestrian infrastructure in connection to transit and just bringing, it really brings better access to our system. So, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Shmoni?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Martin, and Estella. Thank you, thank you, thank you. You work so hard to bring us $5.5 million, and we're so grateful. This is massive. You know, council and the community, like, Martin has we know too well, 419 funds leave us with $29 million. This is an additional 5.5, and that's massive. I want to thank our team for working with you and Mountain Line in making this a reality, and for your advocacy and your efforts with Mountain Line, along with our Bicycle Advisory Committee. We appreciate you, and you're really helping move the needle with the City of Flagstaff. So I just want to say thank you, and whenever appropriate, I would be happy to submit a motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Shmoni. Any additional questions? No, this is really awesome, and thank you so much for your advocacy in making this happen. This is huge, five-and-a-half million dollars. That's amazing. So with that, yes, the floor is yours, Councilmember Shmoni.
You, Mayor, I would like to move that we read a Resolution Number 2022-13 by title only.
I second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. That, oh, that carries unanimously.
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council Approving an Intergovernmental Agreement Between Mountain Line and the City of Flagstaff for Project Management of the First Mile Last Mile Grant.
Thank you. I'm waiting for you here, Councilmember Shmoni.
I was going to let someone else take it, but Mayor, I move you adopt Resolution Number 2022-13.
I second that. I'll beat you to it. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Moving right along here, we are down to Agenda Item 12D. This is Consideration and Adoption of Resolution Number 2022-12, a Resolution Approving an Intergovernmental Agreement Between the City of Phoenix Police Department and the City of Flagstaff Police Department for the Receipt of Funding for the Investigation of Internet Crimes Against Children. Staff recommended action is to read Resolution Number 2022-12 by title only.
Good evening, Mayor and Members of Council. Dan Musselman, your police chief here before you today. My apologies for being virtual, but I'm still a bit under the weather. So the acceptance of this IGA allows for Flagstaff Police Officers to receive training and coordination on the investigation of sex crimes involving the exploitation of children. The IGA also provides funding for outreach and education regarding the prevention of internet crimes against children. We partner with the Phoenix Police Department on this IGA, so we're asking you to approve it. Thank you so much, and I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions? Councilmember Shmoni?
Hey, Mayor. Hey, Chief. You know, I just wanted to say hi, more than anything else, but it's good to see you, and I hope you feel better. I was just curious, I know we work very closely with Fiat, a Flagstaff Initiative Against Trafficking. Is, are we going to be working with them with these, within this partnership, within this IGA as well?
So this partnership provides training to the police officers. Fiat is part of that, and they do separate training, but this helps us be more efficient and effective. So if Phoenix PD is investigating a crime in our jurisdiction, we can help them with follow-up and get to it quicker, and vice versa. Instead of sending, needing to send a bunch of our investigators down to the valley, they'll help us out before evidence is destroyed, so it allows for better coordination that way. The grant's not as exciting as the previous one with $5 million. This only gives us roughly $3,500 in value, but it's still a good cause to go after, for sure.
Absolutely, Chief. Thank you, and we'll take it, right? Thank you.
Any other questions? Then I'm happy to entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to read Resolution 2022-12 by title only.
I second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. City Clerk?
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council Approving an Intergovernmental Agreement Between the City of Phoenix Police Department and the City of Flagstaff Police Department for the Receipt of Funding for the Investigation of Internet Crimes Against Children.
I move to adopt Resolution 2022-12.
I second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Down to Agenda Item 12E, Consideration and Adoption of Ordinance Number 2022-07, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Flagstaff, Arizona, approving the form and authorizing the execution and delivery of a loan agreement with the Water Infrastructure Financing Authority of Arizona from its Clean Water Revolving Fund Program, delegating the determination of certain matters relating thereto to the mayor, the city manager, and the Management Services Director of the city, providing the transfer of certain monies and making certain covenants and agreements with respect thereto, authorizing the taking of all other actions necessary to the consummation of the transactions contemplated by such loan agreement and this ordinance, and establishing an effective date. Staff recommend that- Staff recommend action is to read Ordinance Number 2022-07 by title only for the first time. Mr. Tatter?
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. I am Rick Tatter, Management Services Director and City Treasurer. Today, we actually have three items in front of you, or I have three items in front of you, two ordinances for a first read related to issuing new debt and a reimbursement resolution for potential future debt that we look to issue. It always takes a team to develop a successful initiation of debt on behalf of the city. And with us today online, virtually, we do have our financial advisory team of Stiefel, including Mark Reader, Jack Leaper, and Jillian Johnson, as well as a bond council team, including Michael Cofiso and Paul Gales. This team has been successful quite often in issuing debt for the City of Flagstaff. Of course, most recently was the $131 million for the pension obligation bonds or pension certificates of participation debt, as well as 10 million in water and wastewater revenue bonds and 16 million in general obligation bonds over the last several years. Tonight, I'm not intending to talk about projects that are being financed, just more about the financing aspects that we're looking for. The first item, Agenda 12E, is the authorization to enter into a loan agreement with the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority of Arizona, also known as WIFA. They are a state agency that helps supports communities in Arizona in low-cost financing for water, wastewater, stormwater projects. The city is looking to issue $20 million specifically for the Rio de Flag project that we have going here in the City of Flagstaff. The loan will cover costs such as construction, right-of-way land acquisition, and a portion of the downtown mile study that we have put out. Staff also worked with our financial advisor, Stiefel, to determine what is the best method to issue debt for this-- these projects. We worked with Stiefel and WIFA and discussed what the financing terms would be, and it definitely seems like the most-- the best way to issue this debt at this time. We have a potential of a $1 million forgivable principle that WIFA is offering with this loan agreement, and they do have those low-interest opportunities. This loan will be paid back by stormwater fees, and staff is recommending that you read Ordinance 2022-07 for the first time.
Thank you, Mr. Tatter. All right, any questions, counsel? All right, with that, I move to read Ordinance Number 2022-07 by title only for the first time.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember McCarthy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That carries unanimously.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff, Coquenino County, Arizona, approving the form and authorizing the execution and delivery of a loan agreement with the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority of Arizona from its Clean Water Revolving Fund Program, delegating the determination of certain matters relating thereto to the mayor, the city manager, and the Management Services Director of the city, providing for the transfer of certain monies and making certain covenants and agreements with respect thereto, authorizing the taking of all other actions necessary to the consummation of the transactions contemplated by such loan agreement and this ordinance and establishing an effective date.
Thank you. Brings us to Agenda Item 12F, consideration and adoption of Ordinance Number 2022-08, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Flagstaff, Coquenino County, Arizona, providing for the sale and execution and delivery pursuant to a Series 2019 Utility System Revenue Trust Agreement of Utility System Revenue Obligations, in one or more series evidencing proportionate interests of the owners thereof in installment payments of the purchase price to be paid by the City of Flagstaff, Arizona pursuant to a Series 2019 Utility System Revenue Purchase Agreement to finance costs of certain improvements to the water and sewer utility system of the city, authorizing the completion, execution, and delivery with respect thereto of agreements necessary or appropriate as part of financing the costs of such improvements and paying related financing costs, delegating to the mayor, the city manager, and the Management Services Director certain authority with respect to the purposes hereof, authorizing the Management Services Director to expend all necessary funds therefore and authorizing the Management Services Director or his designees to take all other actions necessary to the consummation of the transaction contemplated by this ordinance and establishing an effective date. I should have timed that, and we could have a battle here in Salzburg. With that, Mr. Tatter.
Can you read it again?
Yeah, does anyone need me to read it again? You guys count all that?
No, the city manager just said you would have violated the three-minute rule. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, Item 12F is the second authorization we're looking for tonight for a private placement debt to be issued in an amount not to exceed $9,865,000. There's two potential financings that we're looking for with this authorization, one for $4.1 million of new debt in our stormwater fund and approximately $5.8 million in refinancing debt related to existing loans we have outstanding with WIFA. The 4.1 new revenue debt in the stormwater fund is to help fund the city's share of the detention basins that are being built at Killip School as part of the IGA or intergovernmental agreement that you City Council signed earlier in January 2022. This helps fund our portion of the project as well as fund the feasibility study and other infrastructures cost we'll see in our stormwater fund. The city is also considering refinancing existing loans that we have with WIFA to a lower interest rate to save money in the long term for our water fund. We have several outstanding loans with WIFA that we would consolidate with a refinancing. We have bids out on the street with several banks to figure out what their options are as far as interest rates and terms, and we will analyze with our financial advisor to determine if any or all of those loans will refinance in the coming months. The new debt is intended to be paid back by stormwater fees, and the refinancing debt is existing debt in the water fund to be paid back by water revenues. Staff is recommending that you read Ordinance 2022-08 by title only for the first time.
Excellent. Any questions, counsel?
Mayor, I move that we read Ordinance 2022-08 by title only for the first time.
I second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That carries unanimously. City Clerk?
You ready? An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff, Coquenino County, Arizona, one, providing for the sale and execution and delivery pursuant to one or more Utility System Revenue Trust Agreements of Utility System Revenue and Revenue Refunding Obligations, in one or more series evidencing proportionate interests of the owners thereof in installment payments of the purchase price to be paid by the City of Flagstaff, Arizona pursuant to one or more Utility System Revenue Purchase Agreements to finance and/or refinance costs of certain improvements to the water, wastewater, and stormwater utility system of the city. Two, authorizing the completion, execution, and delivery with respect thereto of agreements necessary or appropriate as part of financing and/or refinancing the costs of such improvements and paying related financing costs. Three, delegating to the mayor, the city manager, and the Management Services Director certain authority with respect to the purposes hereof. Four, authorizing the Management Services Director to expend all necessary funds therefore. And five, authorizing the Management Services Director or his designees to take all other actions necessary to the consummation of the transaction contemplated by this ordinance and establishing an effective date.
Thank you, City Clerk. That brings us to Agenda Item 12G, a resolution-- consideration and adoption of Resolution Number 2022-14, a resolution of the Flagstaff City Council declaring for the purposes of Section 1.150-2 of the Federal Treasury Regulations, official intent to be reimbursed in connection with certain capital expenditures relating to the wastewater projects, reclaimed water projects, stormwater projects, and transportation projects, and establishing an effective date.
All right, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Counsel. This Item 12G is a reimbursement resolution related to future issuance of debt. As mentioned, this is a procedural requirement that we go through related to federal treasury regulations that set forth the intent for the city to reimburse ourselves for capital expenditures we incur prior to issuing debt. By approving this resolution, it allows the city to determine the appropriate time to issue debt for our capital projects. We don't have the debt-- have to have the debt issued before putting shovels in the ground. We can reimburse ourselves after the fact, and it's very-- it's very good to allow the flexibility of timing of issuing debt for the City of Flagstaff. In our five-year plans, we do recognize that there are several funds that may be issuing debts over the next one to two years, and we are asking for this resolution for $49 million for the reimbursement resolution. The first item is up to $10 million for wastewater projects related to wastewater revenues. Currently, there's plans for new digesters at the Wildcat Plant, as well as wastewater flow conversions, and it will be adjusted-- the financing will be adjusted based on capital needs at the time that we move these projects forward. The second item for $2 million is related to our reclaimed water fund and reclaimed water revenues. This is primarily for the purpose of the bottleneck of the reclaim line going up to Buffalo Park and financing that project. Next, we have 22 million of stormwater projects looking to be paid back by stormwater revenues, primarily-- this is the next piece of the Rio de Flag project with the Army Corps of Engineers, as well as financing several future projects that we may have within the stormwater fund related to the Spruce Wash infrastructure that we will be working on over the next couple of years. And lastly is 15 million for transportation projects paid back by transportation tax funds. The transportation tax fund will be considering issuing debt for projects such as the Beulah University Alignment and the possible partnership to rebuild the Milton Bridge here in downtown Flagstaff as part of the Downtown Mile Project. Those are the four items that we're asking for this advanced reimbursement resolution, and staff is recommending that you read Resolution 2022-14 by title only and adopt.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Tatter. Councilmember Shimonie, is there a question?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Tatter, for your presentation. So, I was wondering where the funding was coming from for the Beulah University Roundabout. You know, I was like, how did Rick find $9 million? You know, that's impressive. Like, Rick Barry, not Rick Tatter, but, you know, I was so impressed, you know? And I was like, gosh, I know we had that kind of disposable money at our fingertips. So, Rick, I'm comfortable with everything on this list other than the Beulah University Roundabout. That's a lot of money, Mayor and Counselors, you've heard me speak to. I don't feel good about us just waving a wand and spending. I think a traditional protective intersection will be smaller and cheaper and within budget, and I'd like for us to explore that, if possible, before we approve this as part of the list. Rick, is there a way-- like, how would you go about, or how would you recommend, I advise or recommend we go about to fulfill that goal?
Well, Councilmember Shimonie, I recommend we move forward with this resolution. It does not mean we're required to issue debt for the project. It does not improve the construction of the projects. It's really setting forth a tool that we can reimburse ourselves to finance this project versus waiting long-term to get it done. It's really bringing cash forward for the project if needed and if approved by council.
Okay, that's helpful. Then I'm comfortable with that, Mayor and Counsel, and I look forward, I really hope we can dive into this topic later, Mayor and Counsel. Thank you.
You, Councilmember Shimonie. That, I move to read Resolution Number 2022-14 by title only.
I second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Shimonie. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously.
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council declaring for purposes of Section 1.150-2 of the Federal Treasury Regulations, official intent to be reimbursed in connection with certain capital expenditures relating to the wastewater projects, reclaimed water projects, stormwater projects, and transportation projects, and establishing an effective date.
Thank you, City Clerk. I move to adopt Resolution Number 2022-14.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember McCarthy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That carries unanimously. That brings us down to Agenda Item 12H, consideration adoption of Resolution Number 2022-15, a resolution of the City of Flagstaff City Council authorizing Amendment Number One to an intergovernmental agreement between the state of Arizona and the City of Flagstaff for the design and construction of a roundabout at the signalized intersection of Fourth Street and Cedar Avenue-Lockett Road. Staff recommend action is to read Resolution Number 2022-15 by title only.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, newly appointed Vice Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Jeremy Degater. I am a capital improvements project manager, and tonight I'll be presenting on the fourth Cedar Lockett Roundabout. We have before you tonight for your consideration and adoption Resolution 22-15. This would authorize Amendment Number One to the existing IGA or intergovernmental agreement with ADOT for the design and construction of a roundabout at the Fourth Street-Cedar Avenue-Lockett Road intersection. Staff's recommended action is that we read and adopt Resolution this evening. The project is located at the corner of Cedar Avenue, Fourth Street, and Lockett Road. This is a very important intersection within our city. We've got multiple entities, very valued entities, on all corners. We have the Pine Forest Charter School on the southwest corner. On the northwest corner, we've got the Mount Eldon Middle School. And on the east-south of Lockett Road, we have the East Flagstaff Library and the Fourth Street Campus of the Coquenino County Community College. Off-screen, there are additional schools and other valued entities as well. If council will recall, roughly a little more than a year ago, we were before you discussing alternatives for this project. We had recently completed conversations with the Transportation Commission, the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committees, and we had come to City Council with different options, primarily had boiled it down to two options, one, the one that you see here before you, and also a multi-roundabout option for this intersection. Following that conversation, we did approve, or we did give-- City Council gave direction to move forward with the option that we see selected here. The primary key consideration here was that this option would require that we would have a full take of the single-family residence that's located on this corner of Lockett Road. Moving forward to present times, the design looks very much like it did back when we met with you last. We have continued to work with Aztec Engineering, the design firm, and ADOT to continue to refine and detail the bike and pedestrian treatments, just really trying to nail down the footprint of this project. And as you can see, it hasn't changed much. We've also been spending this time working to make sure that we are-- excuse me, mitigating any impacts that we have on the surrounding properties. And so, what you see here in this description, in this exhibit, is the purple areas. These are new right-of-way acquisitions, so these will become permanent portions of public right-of-way. And then we have the yellow or orange shaded areas, and these are temporary construction easements that we acquire ahead of construction that would allow the contractor to build the project as designed. A few high-level points of what this IGA amendment includes. So, item number one is that this IGA amendment will allow for a defined city role and participation in the construction inspections. As many of us are aware, we often partner with ADOT through this IGA process to deliver projects that are funded by federal dollars, as we're not certified at the city level to self-administer. We have a pretty defined process through the design portion of the project, but it gets a little more difficult when we move into construction, and it's a real credit to ADOT to continue these conversations and to allow us to have a role during this construction inspection portion. We will actually have a city inspector who will be part of the inspection team, and like I said, credit to ADOT to continue those conversations and be willing to continually improve upon our current process for these projects now and moving into the future. And finally, this IGA amendment updates the estimated cost for the three primary phases of this project, those being design, the one we're in currently, right-of-way, and temporary construction easement acquisitions, that's phase two, and ultimately phase three, which is project construction. To get a slightly deeper dive into those three phases, I'll just talk about the financial impacts. I will note that all of the additional money that we're talking about adding to this project to-- this project to make up the funding shortfall are transportation tax funds. The original IGA that council agreed to back in May of 2020 identified the HSIP, or Highway Safety Improvement Program, grant fundings, which totaled roughly two million dollars. And the language was that any additional funding needed for the project would be supplied by the city. For design, as I mentioned, we're roughly, we're approaching ninety-five percent design. If, if approved this evening, we would immediately send seventy-three thousand dollars to ADOT to pay for the additional design and project administration costs. This is directly related to the footprint and us mitigating those impacts to the surrounding properties, and also just making sure that we have everything solidified. The second phase is the right-of-way acquisition. This will actually be performed directly by the city. So, at some point, Bryce Doty, our real estate manager, will be back in front of council seeking authority to acquire. And the estimated cost for the right-of-way acquisition of this project have also gone up significantly, primarily due to the acquisition of that single-family residential property that was identified back a year ago. Again, no money will actually be, will be sent to ADOT for this portion. We will expend the full six-hundred-twenty-three thousand, that's currently estimated, and we will be able to, we will be reimbursed by ADOT with those HSIP funds when we spend them. Then finally, during construction, this project is suffering from many of the challenges that other projects are experiencing at this time, primarily due to escalating construction costs, and this estimate has gone up significantly as well. We still have the original HSIP funding, which is roughly one-point-four million dollars. And the current construction estimate of just over three million dollars leaves the city share, the money that we would have to bring to fill that gap, so to speak, to roughly one-point-six million dollars. This money is not actually paid to ADOT until just prior to bid advertisement, which we're currently targeting for later this fall. Next steps for this project. If approved, we will move directly into the right-of-way and temporary construction easement acquisition phase. We do intend to hold a public information meeting and anticipate that this will be held at the East Flagstaff Family Library. This date has yet to be determined. We want to make sure we've nailed down all the details and have good information to convey to the neighborhoods, as they will likely have lots of questions about what impacts this will have on their day-to-day lives. After we complete the right-of-way and temporary construction easement acquisition, we'll move into utility relocations. And this is where we work with our franchise utilities, companies, where we've identified conflicts with their facilities and their current location. They will get relocated so that they are not encountered, or they don't become a conflict during construction of the project. We will continue to work to finalize the design and the cost estimate. And ultimately, before we, before the project is advertised, that's when the city, the city will share, pay its share of construction costs. Given the uncertain and fluid nature of the construction world these days, if the prices do further increase, council should expect that we would be back with an additional IGA amendment updating those costs and so on. At this point, we are still targeting construction in 2023. We are confident that we'll be able to accomplish this in one construction season, one construction season. And though one of the primary reasons we'll be able to do this is we are considering a full closure of this intersection, and we're currently targeting the space, the time between the end of school and the beginning of school. So, roughly from early June to the end of July, as being able to get this done in a single construction season. With that, that concludes my presentation on this this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have related to the IGA amendment. Thank you.
Thank you much. Council, do we have any questions? Councilwoman McCarthy?
No, thank you. I realize that this project has already been approved, but just for my edification, would you tell me again how much this project is going to cost? And then, in a ballpark number, if this, if there were no intersection there, what would it cost to build a traditional intersection? In other words, to put in stoplights, curbs, et cetera? Is, I mean, is the roundabout the same price, ten times higher? I'll let you address that.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Currently, this project total cost, including design, right-of-way acquisition, and construction is estimated just over four million dollars, with roughly half of that, or about two-point-two million dollars being the city's share in the current funding scenario. I don't have enough recent experience with what we've been seeing for, for signalized intersections as an alternative as far as cost. We did look at this a little bit more closely to see what cost savings might be available if instead, if the city actually went ahead and built this roundabout without utilizing the federal funding. And that didn't pencil out in the sense that we, there was some cost savings due to that change, but it wasn't enough to forego all the federal funding that was available.
So, I wonder if the other staff members here might have an idea of, I'm just trying to get a gut feel for how expensive a roundabout is compared to a regular intersection. Rick?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I'm Rick Barrett, City Engineer. That's a really tough question. Really try to avoid talking generically like that. I think, um, I'd, I'd say roundabouts are costing probably twice, if not three times, what a standard intersection would cost. And that's lacking property acquisition. And I think that's one of the reasons roundabouts cost more, is they take more property. If we're trying to build them in an existing city, you know, not out in a cornfield, that's why they end up costing even more, is to acquire that additional property right. But it's very site-specific, which is why it's difficult for us to answer that question. But we also get many other benefits out of a roundabout that you don't get from just a standard signal. The crash severity is reduced. That's probably the extent where I can go with that. But we have Jeff here, if council would like to, Jeff Baumann, our traffic engineer, that is, if council would like to go into that more, in more detail. But generally, it's side swipes as opposed to high-speed, you know, running red light type intersections. Again, Jeff might be able to help us more. You know, power outages don't occur at a roundabout. They don't rely on electricity. They don't have a complicated control cabinet. Our police department, fire department, you know, emergency preemption is not necessary. Transit preemption is not necessary. Basically, you know, you get to a roundabout, you yield, you go counterclockwise, and you make the turn you want to make. So, roundabouts are definitely something we're very proud of in our toolkit, in, you know, being able to provide a robust options to our traveling community. But yeah, I'd go back to two, if not three, times more than a standard signal for the reasons I stated.
Rick, thank you so much. I'm satisfied with that answer. We can dig into that in more detail at some other time. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you, Councilman McCarthy. I did actually have a question as a follow-up on that, which might be for Mr. Baumann. So, you know, I was actually speaking to someone who was a little, little upset about the roundabout at this location because of all the kids there. And I was mentioning how it actually reduces pedestrian accidents. Could you maybe speak to that a little bit? Because I think there's some misconception sometimes with the public on what roundabouts will, will do for pedestrian safety, especially with the two schools right there.
Thank you, Jeff Baumann, City Traffic Engineer, Mayor and Council. Yeah, roundabouts, the whole reason for this project, I mean, the naming that Jeremy talked about, Highway Safety Improvement Program. So, the reason we're doing a roundabout here is because we had serious injury crashes and fatality, one fatality at this intersection. So, roundabouts are shown to reduce all crash types, including pedestrians. I want to say, Jeremy may have the numbers in front of him because it's in our application, but I want to say it's in the seventy percent range of those severe crashes. So, extremely safe, single-lane, small roundabouts like this. This isn't completely a single lane. It has one multilane approach, but all the others are single lane. Tend to never have fatalities, essentially, unless something really unusual happens, like a drunk driver driving through the middle or something. So, yeah, really, really safe for pedestrians, cyclists, and motorists. And, and again, that's why we got the federal funding for this location, because we had a crash history. We applied to the program and, and received that grant.
Thank you, Mr. Baumann. I just want to make sure that we had that, yeah, from, from an engineer's mouth, that this is going to help with the safety of that intersection, especially with all the, all the children there.
I, one thing to mention, it also adds the fourth leg of the crossings. Today, kids have to go around three legs to get to MEMS, and we're able to add that fourth leg on the west side, which is really cool. So, yeah, a bunch of really nice improvements with this project.
Thank you. Thanks. Oh, Councilmember Shumoni has a question?
Don't sit down so quickly. I'm gonna try, Mayor, let me know if my camera and my mic is cutting in and out. I think my connection's not the greatest, but, uh,
You're doing okay.
I'll try to leave it on. Okay, thanks. Jeff, thank you for that. You know, I'm curious, from your, your expertise, how does this design with the slip lanes compare to a protected traditional intersection in terms of conflict points and, and crash data? I know I'm putting you on the spot, but do you have any thoughts? Is one typically better than the other?
So, yeah, let me take that in maybe two pieces. I'm not sure I totally understand the protected intersection part, but I'll, I'll go with the conflict point. So, that's, so conflict points are where vehicle paths cross each other. So, in a traditional signalized intersection, think of one leg, and you turn right, you're crossing people coming from the left. You, you understand. So, there's a lot of conflict points with a signalized intersection. Roundabout reduces that to a quarter, I believe. So, that's a big reason why there's less crashes at roundabouts. There's so many less opportunities for conflicts, and speeds are much lower. And that's maybe answering your second question you're asking about. You're calling a slip lane, could be channelized right or dedicated right-turn lanes with this design. So, yeah, there is one leg eastbound to southbound that has a dedicated right-turn lane. And if you look at that geometry closely, and it's hard to tell at these scales, but if you look at that geometry closely, we designed that speed to be about fifteen to twenty miles per hour. So, super slow, and that's another, I've repeated that, but that's another reason why roundabouts are so safe, because we can keep the speed so low, based on geometry, not on signs, not on red lights. It's just built into the design. Does that help get you there with those two questions?
It does. I, I do have a gut feeling that a protected intersection better serves bike and ped and youth than, than a roundabout like this. Is that a fair statement?
I don't know that it does. I would have to look that up. But I'm gonna say no. I'm gonna say that a roundabout, a small roundabout like this is typically safer than any signalized intersection arrangement. I can look it up and follow up with council, but I'm on the spot. I'm pretty sure that's not the case. The roundabout would be safer.
Okay, interesting. Um, and then, Jimmy, if you're able to put up the slide that had the roundabout, I do have questions about the design. I think it's north to south and then east to west. It seemed like a pretty straight angle. And I know we've talked about this in the past, Jeff, but I can imagine cars zooming pretty darn quick heading from the east to the west, because there's not much of a variance. You know, I think the secret is those sharp turns, right? That's how you slow cars down to about ten fifteen. And heading east to west, where the kids will be crossing southbound, is a real concern to me. And, and remember with the roundabout, Mayor and council, the cars are moving consistently. You know, they're not stopping. So, the kid is gonna have to negotiate the intersection. And, and I, gosh, I just did that at the, the one at Fort Hill as an adult, and it was intimidating. It was a one lane, no slip lanes, no channelized rights. And it was, it was sketchy. And cars weren't stopping, I'll tell you that. But east to west and then north to south, I can imagine, like, to north to, you know, south to northeast, I could see cars going pretty quick. Is there anything in the designs, given the angles? Does it tell us, are they gonna cruise twenty, twenty-five, thirty?
Yes, thank you for that question. So, as part of the roundabout design, Jeremy mentioned we have Aztec Engineering as the main designer. And then we have MTGA, which is a national roundabout design firm. They're actually in Madison, Wisconsin. And part of their work, they do a design report, and they check the speed profiles of vehicles for all movements. So, all the thrus, all the rights, all the lefts, and all the U-turns. And they check to make sure that the speeds of the vehicles will be in those ranges, around fifteen. They might be eighteen, they might be thirteen. And they've done speed checks on all of these movements. I think the one, you, you have a good eye, the one that you identified, which is the through movement westbound, was one of the higher-speed movements. But remember, Lockett Road is only twenty-five miles per hour to begin with. Off to the east. I don't remember the exact speed profile there. I don't, it was not over twenty for a typical design vehicle, but that was one of the more straight-through movements. You know, in order to fix that, we would need to take part of the corner of that MEMS building to move the circle up and to the left, which wasn't possible, of course. But good eye. Yeah, that's the, that is the one we were concerned about. Maybe we told you that before.
We probably did, but it just is, it's, it's pretty clear that it's pretty straight. And I just have the, the kids at heart, you know, I'm really worried about their, their well-being. And, and Mayor and council, again, it's not safety we're talking about. It's comfort and crash data, right? Those are the two terms in the engineering world that we need to learn to speak, because this is technically safe. So, a really quick couple questions. How much have we invested in this up until this point? Do we have any estimate on that?
Oh, you're on mute. Sorry. We've currently expended roughly four-hundred-and-eighty thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty thousand of that is federal funding, thirty thousand of that is city.
Okay, and there's an additional one-point-six million that we're gonna have to fork up, more or less?
To complete the project, yes.
Okay. You know, Councilwoman McCarthy, my, my thought is, is pretty close to yours. You know, I, I think a protected intersection with the minimal amount of lanes, honestly, you know, Jeff, I'd like to take you up on, on doing some more research here, but I, I almost, I, I personally feel like I can sleep better at night knowing that there's a protected intersection there, and, and that we're not taking a house from someone today in Flagstaff for a transit project like this. That, that does kind of bother me. And I do know that, you know, the Bicycle Advisory Committee spoke about this, and they spoke about the slip lanes, those right turn lanes, especially the one heading eastbound, heading south, Mayor and council. That one, if we really want to serve our bike and ped and our, our most vulnerable and our youth, we, we should remove that lane. And I highly advocate that we do. And, and also, while exploring, as Councilwoman McCarthy said, a protected intersection, I, I think it'll be cheaper. I think we can keep the family and the home that's there. And we can also make something that we can really be proud of, that won't encourage speeding around the school zone, where kids will have to negotiate their crossings. I also noticed, my last comment is just that, you know, as a cyclist going through this, it's, it's cumbersome. It's not necessarily efficient. This is obviously built for the efficiency of the vehicle while keeping bike and ped safe, but it's not built for bike pedestrian efficiency. And, you know, I'm specifically thinking about, I think the leg was on the north end, where it was almost like off-centered for the bike crossing. Maybe it's center now, but I don't know if there's anything else we can do about that. But I have a lot of concerns about this. And given that we've only spent a four-hundred-and-eighty with one-point-six at least in the horizon, I, I feel like maybe Mayor and council, there's a better way to spend that money. And Councilwoman McCarthy, again, I support us exploring a protected, signalized intersection before we move forward adding one-point-six million. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shumoni. Councilmember Rasslin?
Yeah, thank you. Um, okay, so a couple things. Everybody knows that I'm a big fan of roundabouts. So, there's that. I think, I think my support for this project goes without saying, not only because I've stated that before, but because we've had this exact conversation about this intersection before. I'm, I have to share some frustration in the repetition of these conversations. Councilmember Shumoni, you seem to be wanting to get a different result from discussions that have already occurred and been voted on. And I feel that our time is not being wisely spent in rehashing these conversations and these hours-long discussions that occurred months ago, in, in which our city staff moved forward with a certain direction. So, I apologize if I feel a little, if I sound a little frustrated by that, but that I am. Secondly, Secondly, I want to remind folks that what I've said before at other conversations about this intersection is that my daughter was one of the people who has been hit by a car there. She is one of the data points. Uh, when she was a student at MEMS, she was trying to cross to the library and she got struck by a car. I'm, I, I just, I just wanna remind folks that, uh, I'm aware of how dangerous this intersection is, and I'm looking forward to significant improvements. And also, in terms of, uh, the ownership thing of the, the property, um, that's being purchased, this was part of the conversation that already occurred a long time ago. I'm ready to move forward on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rasslin. Councilmember McCarthy?
Well, I'll just repeat the way I prefaced my question. I said that council's already approved this project, so I don't want to go back and review that. I think, uh, there may be times when it's appropriate to talk about, it sounds like there's really kinda like three options. One is a traditional intersection. One is a roundabout, and the other is this new concept of a protected intersection, which we don't really need to take time to get into tonight. But I think at some point, when it's appropriate, uh, we may want to have that discussion about the three options, not the two options. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Councilman McCarthy. And I'll just say too, my, my wife has had to be in a situation taking care of children from this intersection as well. And, um, this is a safer option than what it is currently. Is it optimal? Is it the perfect way to do it? I, I'm not an engineer, but I will say that this is a safety improvement to what currently already exists. And I am not, uh, interested in losing four hundred and eighty thousand dollars in sunken costs that have already gone into the development of this. So, um, Councilmember Salas?
Mr. Mayor, I'm ready to make a motion.
I do see Councilmember Shmoni has, uh, a comment, and then we can do a motion. But if you could, uh, keep it, uh, brief, please, Councilmember Shmoni. I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I just wanted to appreciate Councilman Rasslin's comments. Um, I understand that we've spent hours talking about this. I do have concerns when things are coming over budget in the millions, that, you know, we really consider those before we dive in, you know, full speed. And I love roundabouts. I just wanna make sure we do them out right as well. Uh, um, Mayor, my, my only comment for you and staff and for council to consider is the potential of exploring, exploring removing of that right, that right slip lane or the channelized right, whatever we're calling it. Um, I think that's a big conflict point for bike and ped, and will add to the crashes that you, we all know too well at that intersection. But if it's too late for that, then it's too late. But I will always speak up for what I believe is excellent, and, and I, and I support, you know, your, your time and your ear and staff's work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shmoni, and we do appreciate your opinion on all, all of these issues and speaking up, for sure. Councilmember Salas?
I move to read resolution number twenty-two dash fifteen by title only.
I second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? That carries unanimously. City Clerk?
Thank you.
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council approving amendment number one to an intergovernmental agreement between the Arizona Department of Transportation and the City of Flagstaff for the design and construction of a roundabout at the signal, signalized intersection of Fourth Street and Cedar Avenue Locket Road.
I move to adopt resolution number twenty-two dash fifteen.
I second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Thank you. Uh, with that, I just wanted to see, uh, from council if we would like to take a break right now or if we would like to power through here. Let's have a, let's have a short break. Let's say fourteen minutes, so let's start up at five-ten. Alrighty, we'll get back to it here. We are down to agenda item twelve I. Consideration approval of modifications to the property development standards. Request by Foundation for Senior Living to approve modifications to property development standards for an affordable housing development located at three-twenty North Humphreys Street. Staff recommends the city council approves the modifications requested as presented. Ms. Puccirelli?
Uh, good evening, Mayor and council. Um, I'm here tonight, um, to ask for this request for adjustment of property development standards. This is for the Foundation for Senior Living. And there we go. This is, uh, an affordable housing project. It's located at three-twenty North Humphreys Street. This is the site of the previous Catholic school. A hundred percent of the units will serve eighty percent area, area median income or AMI or lower. Um, it's coming in as two phases. The first phase is called San Francisco Square, and that has seventy units. And then phase two is Aspen Lofts, and that has seventy-six. Um, this is just an overall site plan for some basics or, um, content. As you can see, phase one has parking located underneath the building. Um, so that's over on the left side there. And then phase two has sort of a central parking garage with the units located around it for the first two stories, and then units above, as well as a, uh, kinda common area space. Uh, this site plan application was conditionally approved by staff in October of this past year. We do require council approval for these requested code modifications. That is part of the zoning code now. It's one of those incentives for a hundred percent affordable housing projects. Um, modifications that exceed fifteen percent may be approved by city council uh, for category one affordable housing developments that provide a hundred percent of the units to people with an AMI of eighty percent or less. So this is only for affordable, a hundred percent affordable housing projects. Um, the applicant is requesting sixteen modifications. I've listed them all. I don't know what your taste is for, for me going through them. I think we'll just look at them at this point. Um, the applicant is here, and they're going to give a presentation where they go through each one. If you don't get enough from them, you can come back to me and we can talk about it. So this is the second list of those, um, requests. The approval criteria. So in order for city council to approve these, there are findings that must be met. The first is that the modifications are consistent with and conform to the goals of the general plan. Uh, the second is that it's not detrimental to public interest, health, safety, convenience, or welfare of the city, and will add to the public good. Uh, the third is that modifications will not endanger, jeopardize, or otherwise constitute a hazard. The development must also be consistent with the character of the area and the type, quality, and amenities of the development are consistent with those found in similar just market rate development. Uh, the applicant is also asking council to request a modification to the number of parking spaces required. That's also covered in that incentives just for a hundred percent affordable development. Um, one of the findings that must be met in that case and specific to this project is that adequate transit service is available to the site. These are two elevations of the proposed building. One, uh, the top one is along Dale, and the bottom one is to the south along Cherry. And I'm going to let the applicant take over from here.
Yes, please come on down.
Perfect. Oh, sorry, Alex. Uh, Alex, thank you so much. Mayor, new vice mayor, congratulations. Uh, for your record, my name is Lindsay Shuby. I am an attorney with the law firm of Gamache and Burnham, forty North Central in Phoenix, Arizona. So happy to be here and so happy to be here in person. Uh, with me tonight is Steve Hastings with Foundation for Senior Living. And then in the virtual world, and we'll call on him in a moment, we have Doug McCord, who's our architect. So again, we're, we're really trying to embody this new world we live in, where some people are here and some people are online. And then we also have Julie Lead from Peak Engineering. So just wanna thank you all very much. This is a project that we've been working on for a very, very long time. So we're very excited to bring it forward tonight and, and see this project, uh, see a shovel in the ground. So I'm gonna pass, uh, pass the baton to Steve Hastings, and he'll talk a little bit about Foundation for Senior Living. And then I'll get into the details, the planning details of the, of the deviations that we're asking for.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, most here present in cyberspace. Thank you for your time and consideration of our request today. I work for the Foundation for Senior Living. My name is Steve Hastings. I'm the Director of Real Estate Services. I've been their lead developer now for over twenty years. And if you kinda look at our history and what we've done, it kind of has led us all the way up to here to a project of this size and magnitude. Uh, along the way, I wanna thank, uh, the city staff, um, just a tremendous group of people to work with. I much prefer working in smaller communities like Flag or Tucson. We get things done in, in Phoenix, but it's much less personal. It's more about regulations and timing and those things. And here you folks are interested, and how's this gonna serve my neighbor, my, my mother, my family? And so we appreciate that. Foundation for Senior Living is an Arizona-only, um, nonprofit. We're coming up on our fiftieth year. You may hear more about that later. We have about four hundred employees, and we're engaged in a number of services. Um, and you might know us from Flagstaff Senior Meadows. I was a developer, and, uh, we built that some years ago up on McMillan Mesa. Only because the prices of land dropped dramatically. Uh, we would've never been able to do that without it. Oh, just do it myself. I got it, I got it, I got it, I got it. We focus on, uh, four areas: safe housing, nutritious meals, health and wellness, as well as caregiver support. I mentioned we have about four hundred employees, about fifty to sixty are engaged in housing. That's our management staff. Uh, we manage all the properties we own. Uh, we hold in perpetuity. We're not interested in selling properties. Uh, we get quite a few calls every day from investors trying to pry them loose, but our mission is to provide affordable housing. Just to give you an idea of the impact, we help about a thousand people a night with housing, uh, nutritious meals every day. We provide healthcare to about three thousand four hundred and sixty-one folks each year, and respite hours of a hundred and fifteen thousand for caregivers. You kinda see we're all over the place. Built in Lake Havasu, down to Yuma, and over in Tucson. Returning back to Flagstaff, again, it's one of our favorite places to be. And, um, we do both multifamily and single-family. A hundred percent of our properties are affordable. We do skew a little bit lower on rents, and, uh, so, uh, all of our properties, if you are, move in, we pay all your utilities, so it's a package, so you don't have to worry about giving us a deposit and going to APS and giving them a deposit, then going to the gas company and so forth. We think it helps seniors plan, and it works very well for us. One thing that's unique is over sixty percent of the units we develop are affordable to people of very low income at fifty percent of AMI. So even though in this first phase, um, San Francisco Square, we could go up to eighty percent, you'll find that we're gonna stop at sixty percent of AMI, and that sixty percent of those units will be at fifty percent of AMI. And if you look at fair market versus where we'll be on those rents, it'll be well over five hundred dollars per unit less in any circumstance for a resident at Flagstaff, or, excuse me, at San Francisco Square. We do a lot of single-family homes, um, going through the NSP program, if you all remember that. We did about a hundred and sixty, um, act rehabs, and we've done about a hundred and twenty-six new construction. We have affordable, uh, first-time homebuyer programs down in, uh, Mesa, and Tucson, and, uh, Wickenburg, and hope to get started on this, get things underway, and start shopping for land up here to do likewise. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about FSL, Foundation for Senior Living, but if not... Yes, sir.
Yeah, Councilman McCarthy?
So, uh, affordable housing basically means, in effect, it's partially subsidized. So what's your, very briefly, what's your economic model? I mean, how do you make up for the fact that you're providing housing at less than it costs to build the housing?
Excellent question. We use a device, a financial device called Low Income Housing Tax Credits.
Okay, I know what that is.
Yeah. And this is a, a fine point. Where we're located now is in a DDA, difficult-to-develop area, so we get bonus credits up there, thirty percent more Low Income Housing Tax Credits. And that's what helps us bring the, the quality and size to the project that you would expect and we wanna provide.
All right, I understand that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect, Steve. Thank you so much. And Steve, I think the only thing you didn't say is there are five hundred people on his local waiting list here in Flagstaff, which is why we're really excited to get a hundred and, uh, a hundred and forty-six units on the market. I've got Alex in the back whispering, which is good. We're a great team. Uh, okay, thank you so much, Mayor and council. Um, so where, the site, I'm sure you've all driven by it. I'm sure you all know where it is. It's just northeast of where we are all standing today. Um, surrounding land uses include commercial, office uses, three-story multifamily, a church, and the city's court building across the street. So this is a very compatible use in terms of our requests that we're asking tonight. And I think it's important to note, and, and again, you probably have driven by the site, it's an entire city block. That's a lot. And so some of the deviations that we're asking for is because of that. The code does not contemplate one property owner in, owning an entire city block, coupled with the slope of the property. So the grade and the size of the parcel are what, is why we have some of the deviations we're requesting tonight. Um, these are just some context photos. Uh, again, we will fit in very well to, to, to the built environment and what's around us. So we are zoned T-five open. That is a transect that we have elected into, so we're electing to use that transect code. As you can see, um, the T-four and T-five surrounds this property, therefore, again, very compatible in terms of uses and height, and the Euclidean zoning that's in the area. So the base zoning has some of the same heights, um, and densities, therefore, you know, a compatible site. Uh, and especially compatible with the future courthouse, uh, or the courthouse that's across the street. So why are we here? As Alex described, we are here, we're asking the council to adjust some of the development standards and asking for a parking incentive, again, only for permanent affordable housing. And, and I think we're stressing that to make sure that you understand that some of my other clients, or I can't stand up here for, for another kind of project. Uh, when the city adopted your text amendment in November twenty-twenty, allowing a hundred percent affordable projects to have these econo, to have these, uh, deviations, you really put yourself on the map. We have been, I've been part of many different workforce conversations and, and affordable housing conversations, which we know is a problem in the entire state, not just here in Flagstaff. And you guys were very, very innovative in coming out of the gate. I have spoken to people in other jurisdictions who wish they had this tool in their toolbox. So I wanna thank you, and you guys are being recognized in, in other jurisdictions for, for having this ability um, for, again, a hundred percent affordable to come in front of you and ask for these deviations. Oh, and no changes to the zoning, permitted use, density, or height. Again, the, the deviations do not change kind of the, the bulk and the character of what, of what the building can be by right without these deviations. Uh, I am going to pass the baton to Doug in, in the virtual world. And Doug hopefully is going to unmute, and there we go, and say his name and, name and address for the record, and then talk to us a bit. And Doug, you can say next slide, and I will move them along for you.
Okay, can, can everyone hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, see me? Okay, fantastic. Well, Mayor, Vice Mayor, new Vice Mayor, that's so exciting. And City Council, thank you. And City Council, thank you for, for your attention this evening. I'm Doug McCord, Principal, Director of Design for Architectural Resource Team. We're at 1055 East Indian School Road in Phoenix. You guys might be excited to know that we're working on the first living building in Arizona as our new office. So hopefully if you're down in Phoenix, we can give you a tour in the next year or so. The project right now is, as you can see from this site plan, is, is split into two phases. The first phase that we talked about is San Francisco Square, which is the, the senior living component with 70 units. And then the second phase is a family-oriented project with 76 units. And the, the really unique thing about this, the amazing thing about the Phase 2 is that it's a little partnership with the city incorporating a garage in the middle, which provides, is going to provide nearly 100 parking spaces for the, for the city. And then we're going to take about a quarter of the spaces for Phase 2. Down the middle, Julie, Julie and I often joke, Julie Lee, the civil engineer, and I think all of you know her very well, she's quite a, a piece of the community there. We've been working in this project since about 2013 and, you know, talking and, and, and talking to the community and asking people, working with staff, of what should happen here. And one of the things that came out many years ago was to bring back the alley character or prototype of the city blocks. And so the green slash across the middle there, which we're calling the passeo, sort of reconnects that alley form across the site. And so that's where we're having some outdoor amenities. We're having a, a public walk that can pass through the site. Shared with the drive access to both properties that comes off of Beaver. To next slide, Lindsay. I'm going to show you just two renderings. This is the corner which you've already seen before. This is Dale in Beaver. From the majority of the left side of the site is the San Francisco Square, the senior housing project. And then we see that, that kind of colorful mural there in the middle on the right. The building then from the right on down to the corner of Humphrey and Cherry will be Phase 2.
Next slide.
Next. This other rendering here is at the corner of Cherry and Humphrey's, showing the facade that faces the courthouse. And then also showing the little entry drive about three-quarters of the way down on the right that will go into the garage. The main entry for this, for Phase 2 is going to be on the corner of Beaver and Cherry there across from the courthouse. You can sort of see on the lower, lower right of the, of the rendering there shows more glass and openings, which will be the lobby to Phase 2.
Okay, Doug, I'm going to take it back over, but we're going to need him one more time. Okay, so you know where the property is and generally what it's going to look like. So why are we here? What are the specific deviations that we are requesting for 100% affordable project only? Before I get into the exact deviations, I just want to state that in my professional and personal opinion, these deviations, and when we go through them, they are in the minutia of the zoning code. Yet the transect code is so prescriptive. It does not allow for any deviation or variations. There are things that are good about that, that help in terms of the urban form, density, sustainability goals. But when you just need small deviations, it's, it's very tough. This is not unique to you. This is not a problem of, of the way you adopted your code. It's all transect codes. Where I've got two projects in Mesa and one in Phoenix that are all suffering from the same thing right now. And as I said, you are the envy of other jurisdictions in terms of having this tool in your toolbox for affordable housing. But, but it is minutia. Some of these details that we're asking for, and as I go through them, to, to the normal person walking down the street, they will never know that we asked for these deviations. This building is going to look very normal and much like anything else. So here are the first six deviations. And we're, we're, we've categorized them in terms of why, of why we believe that we need this request. And the first one is the unique topography of the site and the size, so the slope and the size. In addition to that, the T5O zoning, coupled with the commercial block building type, right, have we all fallen asleep yet with all these planning terms? Really does contemplate commercial on the ground floor. Think about when you're driving up Milton and you see all the commercial on the ground floor, those new mixed-use buildings. That's what it contemplates. So those are some of the standards and some of the deviations that we're asking for. We don't have commercial on the ground floor. We want to maximize the number of affordable units that we can have here. Therefore, we need some deviations. So the first one, distance between the sidewalk and the ground floor. Six inches is what's required in the code and we're asking for nine feet. The reason we're, again, it gets back to the presumption that you have commercial on the ground floor. So the nine feet will allow us, if you look on the right, which is the family kind of mixed age size, to have stoops and courtyards and have that residential feel. And then again, as Doug stated, the north half of the site is intended for senior living. And there are a lot of mobility issues that you have. Every unit will be ADA accessible. So that means we can have steps or steps in our floor plates. So ironically, we need that modification for two different reasons. Second modification, build two line. We're asking for six feet along the street frontage instead of two feet. Again, naked eye, I don't think you would ever notice this. But we, our stoops need to be outside of the right-of-way. Therefore, we need six feet to accommodate kind of more of a residential urban feel. And then also pedestrian corridors, thoroughfares, wider sidewalks, and enhanced landscaping, which I think that's something we all want. Number three, engaged porches on one side. You're supposed to be able to access the porch on two sides. We think one side is going to be okay for residential, so we're asking you for that deviation. And it allows for more units. Fifth, second forecourt along a street frontage. What's a forecourt? It's a courtyard with a roof. You're only allowed to have one. We'd like two. And on one side, three. Frankly, I think it results in a better design and it bookends the, the building on the two sides. So I think aesthetically it's better. And it also just makes for more of a charming urban slash residential feel, again, because there's no commercial there. Last one, the building between entries for Phase 1 and, or the space between the entry points. So again, the zoning code envisions commercial. So think a commercial front shop, you normally have every 50 feet, a door and a retail space. That, that's what the code envisions. When you have a residential project, whether it's mixed-use or affordable, they don't need to be evenly spaced. So we're asking for less entry points. And frankly, I think it provides for more controls and safety. So take a deep breath, that was the worst page. These three are because it is a residential use. On the ground floor, again, because it's supposed to be commercial or they envision commercial, you're supposed to have a 14-foot ceiling. We want eight feet. Eight feet will allow us to get more affordable, more residential units in there. The second one is ground floor units are supposed to have a depth of 30 feet. Again, that's super intentional. From a commercial standpoint, you want a depth of 30 feet to accommodate commercial. For us, we only need 21 feet. Now, we, we're not going to take advantage of, of this code modification or deviation in every unit. There's just some where, and actually you can see on the south side or on the, along Cherry, the units are wider as opposed to deeper. So the unit will still be big. We're just asking for a little more width than we are depth. That's why we need 21 feet instead of 30. And engaged porches in commercial block. You're not allowed to have them. We would like some engaged porches. So we're asking you for that. Architectural modifications. The forecourt, again, we, courtyard with a roof, is supposed to be 10 and a half feet. And, or, sorry, it's supposed to be 12 feet. We're asking for 10 and a half. And that's not for all of them. That's only for one of them. The other ones will be much bigger than what is required. So we need a deviation on one side. The use of rail fencing at the build-two line. So again, the code contemplates a building right on that frontage or a block wall. That's not appropriate in a residential setting. I think a rail fence is far more appropriate and aesthetically pleasing. Doug, I'm going to send it to you. Three, allow for building facades to be wider than 75 foot max.
Okay, so again, along the line that Lindsay was speaking about is that contemplation, mostly from a commercial perspective. And so we, our team is, you know, trying to walk that fine line between a very expensive project and affordable project. So all affordable projects, it takes a lot of creativity to use, to kind of use simple materials in extraordinary ways and to try to make the building and the structure as efficient as possible to, to allow that affordability to really, to really happen. So, and I have to, I have to give a shout out to Alex and the team there. You know, they, they challenged us, they pushed us to really try to get to elevation and a facade and the articulation of the facade that really tried to break up the building massing. So again, we're dealing with units that stack, they're all the same. Again, for that efficiency, there is, if you want to go back to slide, I think it's 14, Lindsay? Sort of show the one before that, yeah, on the left-hand side of, of this image. Those units in those three, four, actually, that you could consider to be separate buildings or separate massings or articulations, all those units are the same. And so, you know, we, we were challenged by Alex and the team to, you know, use different materials and different spacing of the windows and even some different window sizes. And I will just say that, you know, we're, we're up to the challenge, but every corner adds thousands of dollars to a project. And, you know, we, we took up that challenge and I greatly respect what Flagstaff is trying to do. I mean, you guys, as, as Steve alluded to earlier or plain out stated, you guys really care about the community. You care about what it looks like. You care about the pedestrian environment and we really appreciate that. And, you know, honestly, being the Director of Design on my firm and with my team, I think they did an outstanding job here of trying to make something really beautiful, trying to keep an eye on affordability that whole time. And I think, I think everyone at Flagstaff will be pleased at the outcome of, of what this project is going, going to look like. And so for that, that modification that we're talking about on line three there, if you want to go back, is, it says, you know, you shouldn't, every 75 feet, you should have a different building, kind of facade or a breakup. And we tried our best to do that. And I think there's still a little bit of debate on whether we achieved that or not, but we're very close to that. And I think Alex asked us to go for a modification for this, just to be, kind of to cover everyone and make sure that you guys understand that, you know, this, this is a big building. We've broken it up and, and, you know, changed the massing and articulation considerably along all, all of the facades and all the street views. But we're, there's an argument whether, whether we're hitting 75 feet or not. So we're, we're asking for that modification just to cover everyone and make everyone happy.
Perfect, Doug, thank you. Number four, bicycle parking shall be located within 85 feet of the entrance. You're supposed to be 50 feet of the entrance. We do meet that on the senior side. We do not meet it on the family side. So we're a little bit further from the entrance. That said, Councilman Schimoni, don't worry. We are two to three times the number of spots, bicycle spots. So we've got the spots, it's just on the, on the mixed, the mixed ages side. It's a little bit further from the door, but I hope that's okay.
They're all covered.
Yeah, and they're all covered and they are all covered spots. So there you go. And then four-foot light wells instead of five feet. It may sound like, again, a minutia, a tiny little detail, but it does, it will help us save units, more affordable units and more parking. Okay, we're really close. Requests for a parking incentive. We are asking to, for 114 parking spots for FSL and 97 parking spots to be available to the, for the city for the courthouse. And we're also requesting a 14-foot minimum parking setback, where a 50-foot parking setback is required. We have 70 spots for Phase 1, 74 spots for Phase 2. Normally, FSL has 30 to 50% of the parking spots used during peak time. This is not a high, you know, this isn't a high vehicular use community. For example, in Tucson, we, they have 33 spots for 80 units and no one on the waitlist. We think when you have an urban affordable project like this, where you have walkability, you know, I drove by today, you've got walkability to the bank, to restaurants, to, to everything you need. We don't need any more spots than that as well as access to transit. In addition to that, each project will have its own van. And they are ADA-accessible vans. And so they have drivers that can take them around the community. So I, I think because of those reasons that we do qualify for the, the parking incentive.
Real quick, Councilwoman McCarthy has a question.
Yeah, could you go back to the last slide? What does it mean, 14-foot minimum parking setback? I don't know what that means.
From the street, and Alex and Nick are going to correct me if I'm wrong. You're supposed to be 50 feet from the street, correct, Alex?
Right. I believe the, the goal of the code was to create viable space in a building and that we didn't want these sort of token strips of building that weren't really usable and then like a parking garage right behind it. So the goal of the code was to push even interior structured parking back 50 feet, thus creating this area that could be used for residential, used for commercial. So because the units, especially along Cherry, are narrow and they're actually 15 feet. So we'd like, the applicant is requesting a 15-foot. I know the, the presentation referred to 21. But what we really need is 15. Because those units are so narrow to give us enough space to have the parking garage. And so this is kind of the other side of that, like making sure we have enough space for the units, enough space for the parking. So instead of pushing the parking back 50 feet, can we just push the parking back 14 feet? That gives us a little wiggle room between the unit and the garage.
So the code says that the parking lot shall be at least 50 feet away from the street.
Yes.
Okay, I just didn't, wasn't clear to me what that meant. It makes sense now. Thank you.
Okay. And I appreciate, we are a good team with Alex. I love when she corrects me because we're, we're all looking out for each other. It's like checks and balances. And the, the 15-foot depth, I apologize, we did make a mistake. I said it was a 30-foot depth. 30-foot depth is required. I asked for 21, it's actually 15. Those are two-story units, though. So not, so they're wide and they're two-story, but they are 15 feet in depth. And there's just a few of them, again, to accommodate additional parking spots. But they still are buffered from the street, which is the goal of the code. But thank you, Councilman, that's a very shocking that the Ex-Planning and Zoning Commission member has the, has the detailed questions. I appreciate that. Okay, we're at the end. In order for this to be approved, Council, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council, you have to find that we meet five approval criteria. Alex went through them, but I'm going to tell you what they are and how we meet them. That we are consistent and conform with the goals of the regional plan. Absolutely. This proposed development is supported by the regional plan. Reinvestment, infill redevelopment in existing neighborhoods, area types and place types. We need to prove that we're not detrimental to the public interest, health, safety, convenience or welfare, and will add to the public good. I submit to you that redevelopment of an underutilized infill project with 146 new permanently affordable workforce housing units will not be detrimental. And it will be a benefit to the community and overall public good. We do not, we do not endanger or constitute a hazard to the property or improvements in the vicinity. The redevelopment of the property will not endanger, endanger the area. We will submit all of our, all of our building plans, actually, I think some are in. We're going to review with your staff and we will absolutely ensure to meet all code and have orderly development consistent with the character of the area. The proposed development is consistent with and reinforces the existing character. As we talked about, the site relationships, the pedestrian connectivity, the landscaping, the scale, that all fits in with what's up there. Say, up there, north. And the proposed multifamily residential use, density and building height are permitted by right and consistent with the adjoining properties. The last one, the planned amenities are consistent with those found in similar developments that are available at market rate projects. Absolutely. The planned, and we've gone through a review with your staff, the planned amenities are consistent with those of market rate communities. It includes landscaping, hardscape, play and barbecue areas, an art walk. And then as Doug discussed, that, you know, FSL is voluntarily and excited providing that new public pedestrian passeo that will result in uninterrupted pedestrian connectivity all the way. providing that new public pedestrian passeo, um, that will result in uninterrupted, uh, pedestrian connectivity all the way to Thorpe Park. So we're really excited about that. So conclusion, it's not a zoning change. It's a multifamily residential development. The density, the building height are permitted by right. We have energy efficient units. This has an opportunity to provide a hundred parking spots to the city. We do have community support. The only phone calls and emails we have gotten have been in support or inquisitive in nature. We have not heard any negative. Um, further supports the city's affordable housing plan. Staff has reviewed and approved the site plan. Um, and staff recommends approval of the proposed request. So I stand for questions. We've got our, our, our entire team, virtual and here, if you have any questions for us.
Thank you. Uh, before we jump into that, uh, we do have one public participant that I'd like to take, uh, now. David Hayward, if you'd like to come forth.
Hello everyone, David Hayward, good to see you. Um, if I make any, uh, unintentional facial expressions, this is just my first time speaking in public without a mask on in two years, so it's not personal. Uh, I, and I'm here today, uh, as a, a co-founder of a group called Flagstaff for Affordable Housing. Um, we are working, um, you know, with many members of the community and interested parties in helping support and push for affordable housing projects. Um, I don't think this one needs our help, but we want to be here and speak for, uh, you know, for it. Anyway, um, obviously we are in, you know, huge support of bringing much needed, um, a hundred percent affordable units to Flagstaff. Um, I think the, you know, seeing these, uh, you know, very specific, I had, you know, I'm a real estate developer, I had to look up some of these items, right? I'm like, what part of the code is that? Um, you know, making very minor changes. It is, you know, the culmination of the hard work of staff and, uh, prior staff in really recognizing that there was a, you know, that there are potentially issues with our code, um, and providing flexibility for projects like this. We implemented, you know, a policy and a measure to, to deal with that by you guys being able to provide these, um, e- exceptions. And it's just great to see that, you know, come to fruition and come in front of you guys and it be, you know, the last step between, um, you know, these guys' decade of hard work and getting this project off the ground. So I really do, uh, urge you to support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hayward. All right, with that, uh, we don't have anyone online, I, I see. So with that, I'm happy to turn it back to Council for any questions. Uh, Vice Mayor Sweet.
Thank you and thank you for the information. Um, this project is something I believe our community desperately needs. Couple of questions. Can you expand on how the waitlist works? And if we have someone from the community watching, how would they get on the waitlist and? Thank you.
Thanks, um, for the question. Uh, we attend to fair housing in all of our projects. So as we break ground, we'll start an information list online and people can sign up there. The day we can start taking applications, all the people who have shown interest get notified simultaneously. Even though we have people on the waitlist up at Flagstaff Senior Meadows, they don't get preference, they get in line uh, for the information, just like everyone else, and then we release it all at one time. And, um, you know, the first ones completed and in, you know, get, get approved and, and get housed. It's a lot of calamity for a very short amount of time, I'm afraid.
Okay, and my next question, can you remind me, how long are the units affordable? Is it twenty years, thirty years, fifty years?
Um, the primary affordability for a normal ITech project, loan comp, housing tax credits is fifteen years plus thir- another fifteen for a total of thirty. Um, I, I don't know, I can't remember what we committed on this one, but w- we don't have any expectation will be anything other than what it starts out as, affordable interperpetuity.
Okay, thank you.
Good, Councilmember McCarthy.
I think that was a non-answer. Ser- seriously, I mean, it, you said that you're obligated to do thirty years and you may or may not do it longer. You're, it's not in the contract you're in writing, is that correct?
Uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember McCarthy, correct. Thirty years is what is required. We have not, uh, no, no one's actually asked us for any longer than thirty years. Foundation for Senior Living has no intention and, and not asked, I mean, again, we're, this is a planning exercise, these are, these are planning modifications. So, um...
But the formal agreement is thirty years, is that correct?
Correct.
And they hopefully will extend it beyond that, but that's the commitment, thirty.
We do have, we do have properties that we built in the eighties that remain affordable today. We haven't changed a thing. I, I can't make a, a promise for future Board of Directors or, you know, hopefully I'll retire sometime, but our plan, our plan is affordable for as long as we, you know, interperpetuity. We hope generations benefit.
And, and don't take my, uh, comments personally, it's just that, you know, as council members, we have to deal in what's concrete.
Yeah.
And I appreciate that you probably will extend it beyond thirty years. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Shimonie?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, hi Lindsay and, and the applicant team, it's, it's good to see you all. Um, I think we said sixty years, right? I'm just kidding, but, uh, uh, thirty years is, is fine, you know. Uh, obviously I love for the agreement to be sixty years, but I totally trust that the, your, your, your team and your mission will remain to be, you know, remain true past that thirty years as, as you just mentioned. So, thank you. Um, you know, I'm curious if staff has, uh, any other comments about the different, um, requests that are being made that, that Lindsay presented on. You know, there's a lot being asked for and this is a large project. Uh, I appreciate the infill, I'll say that. And I do believe that this helps create more of a walkable community, which is in line with our climate neutrality plan, so I'm all for infill. But this is a pretty large project and, and there are a lot of requests here.
Hi, um, I guess, I'm not quite sure how to answer the question, um, because, because I also live here as a community member and I know how important affordable housing is to us. And I do agree with, you know, when the applicant talks about a lot of these deviations, the average person walking down the sidewalk isn't gonna pick up on them. Um, I think, I mean, I definitely had concerns. I mean, Doug talked about it, like I, I'm sure Doug hung up on a lot of phone calls and cursed my name. Um, because I pushed him really hard that, that, you know, yes, it's affordable, yes, there's a budget, I still want something good. Um, that's what we deserve. So, um, I don't know if that answers the question, but...
You know, I'll just ask in follow-up, is there anything specifically that you reckon, that you want to bring to Council's attention? Um, that you think really should be, uh, tweaked? On the deviations?
No, I don't think so. No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that helps. Um, Lindsay, um, you know, the park, bike, bike parking distance is a little bit problematic, but if it is what it is and there's nothing we can do, then, then, you know, it is what it is. Uh, I appreciate that it's covered parking, that makes a big difference for our residents, as you know, with all the weather we get. Um, and I hope that that distance doesn't discourage people from riding and making it less efficient than driving. Um, but, um, I, I just want to say I appreciate the, the partnership with the city to support our courthouse parking. I know it's been a big topic at the city and, and we really appreciate the partnership here. It means a lot to the City of Flagstaff. Um, you know, those were my questions and, and I'm looking forward to this moving forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimonie. Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, just kind of in summary, I want to say I do support this project and I do support the proposed changes. For a couple of reasons. One is that, um, we do need the affordable housing and I'm willing to bend the rules a little bit. The other thing is, you know, some people are going to hate this building because it's so big. But even if we didn't not, even if we did not allow any of these changes that are up for discussion tonight, the building would look essentially the same. And so, the people that are not going to be happy with this project, even if we denied everything that's on the table tonight, they wouldn't be any happier with it. And the reason, it, it's in the existing zoning. And just as a point of triviality, I'm drinking water out of a cup that the city gave me. It says, "I survive City of Council zoning code adopted eleven, one, eleven." I was on planning and zoning when this went through. So if that's, if you hate me or love me, there it is, it's documented. So my major point is that even if we turned all this down, the project would look basically the same. And if we do approve these things, it makes the project more practical, it gets us more affordable housing. So, bottom line, I am supportive.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. I did have a couple of questions. Um, so the, uh, building facade of seventy-five feet, um, what are you expecting the, uh, you know, footage change that would be needed? Building, yeah, as in, is it going to be eighty feet? Is it going to be a hundred feet?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, you know, I, I'll let Alex and Doug handle most of this, but, you know, I think Doug believes that he did achieve that seventy-five, so I don't know if you can put a foot number to it, but Alex is probably better to answer that question.
Right, so the code requires that, um, in this transit zone, that buildings over a hundred feet should be broken up and look like maximum seventy-five-foot wide buildings. And to do that, it requires changes in material, um, changes in roof form and changes in window patterns. This is where, um, the applicant and I maybe agreed to disagree that there, because of the way the units are designed and the way they're stacked, trying to get changes in window sizes was needlessly complicating the design of the building. Over, yes. Overall, um, the building sits under one big roof. And so trying to break that up and do multiple smaller roofs, you know, in architecture school, they teach you every time you have a connection, that's a point of potential failure. You know, much, much more efficient to have one roof, that you're not dealing with all these crevices and attachments. So I mean, I understand why the design is the way it is. So I wouldn't necessarily say, well, we want to break up the building into hundred-foot or eighty-foot or eighty-six point five feet. It's more like this building jogs, this building has, um, different entry points and different use of material along the base, but it's not precisely meeting that standard in the code that's asking it to look like separate buildings. I don't know that someone looking at this building will say, oh, there's five buildings all set up along the sidewalk. I think they'll see it as this is one building. Um, but that has enough interest and variety to it that it, it would not be a terrible thing. So, does that help?
Yeah, thank you. And then my other question is about parking. Um, so what happens if the, you know, for some reason, there's a higher ratio of need for parking for your tenants? Um, how is that going to affect our public parking? For example, if, you know, the, they want to have a hundred and thirty, they need a hundred and thirty spots, but only a hundred and fourteen have been designated for the residents. Is that going to eat up into our public parking? Or is there any, you know, agreements on how much public space we're going to get, especially considering we're putting a good chunk of change into the parking situation?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'll start, Mayor, Vice Mayor, that, no, once we've made, reached an agreement on the parking, then, then we reach an agreement on the parking and that parking is protected for the city. Uh, but you typically have not had parking problems. They would work with the residents if we end up with, and, and try to figure out solutions. But, you know, Steve actually believes that we're probably overparked here for what the residents are going to need. Um, and that's based on years of experience in many projects.
Our typical problem is we have too much parking left over. Um, and in all of our properties, we provide an accessible van and we take people to events, we'll take them anywhere but to a casino. We don't feel like that's our role. So if we need two vans, we'll provide a second van. If we need a third van, we'll provide a third van. Um, we also provide residents with, um, uh, bus passes and training and how to use the bus. And sometimes we set up little, um, transportation nodes inside our building to help people understand when buses come and which bus to get on, to get them comfortable and sometimes to ride with them. But the idea is to get people out of cars, especially in this wonderful urban setting you have here. And so we'll work towards that with our residents.
Excellent, thank you.
If, if I could just add one thing, sorry to interrupt, is that the garage is designed so there are two separate entrances that do not overlap. And so the resident entry, they cannot get to the city parking's, um, side from the resident entry. And we, we assume there's going to be some sort of, um, gate or, or some sort of control over who parks in the city, uh, the city lot.
Excellent.
The city side.
You just got it A-plus on that answer. Um, Councilmember McCarthy?
I noticed this is a four-story building. The code would, and correct me if I'm wrong, the code would allow this to be a five-story building, is that correct?
Uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember McCarthy, the code again doesn't, doesn't, that darn transit code, and we deal with it in Mesa too. It doesn't say stories, it says height. So...
Well, let me rephrase my question. This will be probably a X-foot-high building. It could probably be another ten feet taller, is that correct?
It, it actually is a five-story building. Um, yes, it's a five-story building and
Who knows those terms?
Transit zone does, um, it controls the number of stories. And in this zone at least, not the overall height, um, but it does control number of stories.
So explain to me why it's a four, five-story building when my picture only shows four. One, two, three, four.
In that corner, that's a five, a four-story piece of the five-story building.
Okay, so some parts are four-story, some parts are five-story.
Yes, correct, Councilman, if you look...
Is that your story on this?
That's the story. We're a story and we're sticking to it, yeah. No, if you look on the right...
So a lot of that has to do with the building code. And you go over four stories with wood and it becomes kind of exponentially more expensive. And so we can do four stories over a podium structure like we're doing on the, the north side. On the south side, we do have some code trickery that we're working with that to keep five stories away from four stories, but the, the whole goal is to keep it as type five construction using wood.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Shimonie?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Steve, I believe that's who it was I was speaking earlier. Um, you know, I really appreciate your comments and Doug and Lindsay in regards to walkable and sustainability goals and the urban context that exists here. Um, I think my camera just cut out and that's okay. Hopefully you can still hear me, but basically, um, I'm just wondering, Mayor and Council, you know, we often hear from sustainable, sustainability that we're overbuilding for the car and we're overparking for the car. And Steve, again, I so appreciate that advocacy and what you're, you're, you're saying about your other projects and your firsthand experience. And I'm just wondering, Mayor, if, i- in Council, if we have the political will and the, the, uh, guts, quite frankly, to start talking about reductions in parking, starting with this project. Mayor, if there's not political will, there isn't political will, but, uh, there's no time like the present to, to lead and really fulfill our climate neutrality plan, especially with such a downtown walkable project, I mean, this is perfect. So Mayor, I don't know if you have the appetite to invite anyone from sustainability into the conversation, if they're with us, or if you have thoughts or others on Council, but, uh, just trying to rally my fellow council members to take charge and lead here when it comes to pikey, parking reduction and not overbuilding for the personal vehicle. This could be a great opportunity. And maybe it's something we let, you know, staff run with and, and Lindsay and the team run with, um, I don't know. But I, I have a voice out, thank you.
Thank you. Well, we have discussed this previously about this parking structure and approved it in the past on Council. Uh, just, let's remember too that, you know, we made a big promise to the downtown businesses regarding our courthouse many years ago, back in what, twenty-ten, two thousand and eight, that went unfulfilled due to additional costs. And we... in, what, 2010, 2008, that went unfulfilled due to additional costs. And we, I think, owe that same thing that was promised to the downtown businesses back then, that then led to the affirmation of that bond for the courthouse. So to me, I think we need to respect the voters' will from back then, that this is a gap that's being filled in that. So that's my personal opinion, though.
Just to clarify, I'm not asking you reduce for the courthouse, but maybe reduce requirements for the project residents, given that most of them will have access to the van and not be bringing a vehicle. But, yeah, that's more the angle I was thinking here.
Mayor Vice Mayor, if I may, Councilman Shumoni, so we are asking for a parking reduction. So this is a reduction as to what code is requiring. And I think we really have hit the sweet spot of making sure we have enough, and we don't burden the community. But it is absolutely, we are asking for, we're asking for less spots. So trying to get you there.
Yeah, actually, that's, we're waiving it to go down already. So it's, what, normally one per unit? That would have been 146. Instead, we are at 114?
117. I'm going to look at the slides. 114.
Okay. So that's, that is actually what we're doing. We're really, I feel, meeting those sustainability goals and redirecting. And especially with double, tripled amount of bike spaces, I think this really is befitting of our new goals as a council and our path forward. So. All right. With that, is there any other comments or questions? Councilmember Salas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With regard to the 97 public parking spaces, how much, how much the city, how much is the city paying for those spots, and for how long?
Yeah, Mayor Vice Mayor, Councilwoman, good question. That's not at issue today. So the parking agreement, and that's all we're asking for is the deviations tonight. And we have a building that's planned for Phase 2 that can accommodate those spots. So when and if, and City Manager, I can point it to you, when and if you want to move forward, then we can accommodate them in our building.
Does anybody here jump in? Thank you, Mayor, Council. Thank you for the question. Yes, that's the next phase. But since you asked, I can give you some information that I think will give you great comfort in this. There's been a lot of negotiations underlying the question you just asked, and they've been, I think, very fruitful. The city has also budgeted for the amount of money. The city will acquire those spaces in fee, so we will own them. And so the cost of those spaces will be for the constructed spaces and the cost of the land going into the spaces. And those calculations have been performed, I think, to the satisfaction of the city. It's, so, so the city will own those in perpetuity. They will definitely meet the needs of the new courthouse, and then some. Obviously, with courthouse hours operating normally during regular business hours, what you can glean from this is public parking spaces available beyond daytime hours and weekends as well. So this has been mentioned to the Downtown Business Association, and they were quite pleased. I don't want to speak for them, but it was a very favorable response to this. And since we're chatting briefly about parking, which is not pertinent to this particular phase, I will take the opportunity and thank the applicant and the team for also providing the city the opportunity to lease surface parking, which is underway, is happening, it has been happening for months, which is now benefiting the entire downtown area, and again, the courthouse. That arrangement was reached, just in good faith, between the city and the developer. Space is very tight there, so we were grateful to see the surface parking that has been provided under a lease arrangement. So I wanted to thank the applicant for meeting the city's needs in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, with that, I would like to move to have City Council approve the modifications requested as presented.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember McCarthy.
I'll second up.
Thirded by Councilmember Aslan. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone.
Not very often we get to have happy faces when we make decisions, is it? All right. With that, we are down to Agenda Item 13A. This is our future agenda item request, a request by Councilmember Salas to place on a future agenda a discussion about bringing back the city-owned parcel at Schultz Pass to the list of properties to be developed for working, workforce housing. Councilmember Salas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, going back to the time when I presented this, when I submitted this as a fair item, I think it was a week after council unanimously approved the tenure housing plan. So the intent of this fair is to bring back the Schultz Pass parcel to the inventory of city property intended for workforce housing development, which was originally intended for anyway. I hope you had the chance to go through the case study that was presented, that was done by staff not just a couple of years ago. It narrates the history of the purpose of the purchase of this property, which is intended for housing, and with over a million, over half a million already spent in public dollars for public utility, infrastructure, and the like. So, so today, and of course, I understand there may still be a possibility of a citizen ballot initiative, but we haven't seen it yet. So, and I quote the, the last sentence of the case study. Once, the last two sentences, once submitted, the group's ballot initiative could be placed on the next ballot unless the Flagstaff City Council for a special election on the subject. In the meantime, there's nothing preventing either the current or future councils moving forward with development of the property. So this fair item just intends to, to discuss this property, you know, just living up with our promises of, of working toward, toward providing an inventory of workforce housing for our, our, our teachers, our public employees, our first responders, our workforce. And we're short of 9,000 units for our own workforce from, within the city.
Thank you, Councilmember Salas. Before we go to council, we do have a public participant that I would like to take, David Hayward.
Sorry to get me twice today. So, you know, as I mentioned, we have recently founded a group called Flagstaff for Affordable Housing. One of the primary goals of that group will be to assist with and also ensure the successful implementation of the new housing plan in all its glory. One of the items that we are, you know, that we are concerned about as a group, and I think that reflects, you know, a national conversation as well, is how the placement of affordable housing projects is driven, you know, in some part by issues of institutional racism, you know, the previous effects of redlining on our neighborhoods, whether we've seen, you know, investment in certain neighborhoods versus others, not necessarily by, you know, current policymakers, but, you know, definitely by the folks that preceded them. And so whether this particular parcel is better suited to wildflowers, or to housing, you know, the neediest members of our community, is a decision that you'd have to make. But I would urge you to make it within the context of the entire community. It's very easy for these projects to be stalled by those folks who have the time, the ability, and the wherewithal, you know, to come forward and say, we don't, we like this, but we don't want it in our community. And the folks who do not have the time, wherewithal, or ability to have that conversation, they're the ones who end up with affordable housing projects. We've seen that in Flagstaff. We've seen it all over the country. And I would just really urge you to take that concept into consideration when you're making this decision. And whether it's made now or made later, make it within the, you know, the overall balance of what we want as a community when it comes to, you know, the housing folks who need our help to get that housing. So, thank you very much, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Hayward. All right. And that's our only public participant? All right. Well, I just had, I had some questions about this, and mainly just the verbiage of the fair. Because it says, bringing back this parcel to the list of properties. But there wasn't anything, say, earmarked in our zoning that this is going to be housing versus something else, and it got off a list, and now is put on a list? I'm just a little confused with, it's just, we have property within the city and small parcels in a lot of places that could be used for a lot of things. So I'm not exactly sure, bringing back a city-owned parcel to a list of properties for workforce development, I'm just kind of confused by the verbiage there, because it wasn't really taken off a list.
Okay, if my memory serves me right, so it was this time, three years ago, that council, and I was the fourth, the fourth member of council who, who arrived at a consensus in allowing for a public, a citizen initiative to take place for the, like, to protect the, this property for open space. So in my, in my understanding at that time, this property was kind of removed from the list of, of our inventory of city property for housing development. And please correct me if I'm wrong. And we have Ms., Mr. Daniel.
Hi, good evening. Would you like, I do think I do have an answer for you.
Yes, thank you.
Yes. Good evening, Dan Foul, Community Development Director. So, a few years back, we were putting together the Scattered Site Project, and we had three scattered sites, and this was one of them, the Schultz, I call it the Schultz Meadow parcel. And so we were going to put out an RFP, find a developer to build affordable housing, and this was one of the three parcels. It was then removed by council and replaced with a different parcel. So I think that was the last time it was considered for the development of housing.
But it was the list for the request for proposals, not like a general list. Is that correct?
Well, yeah, we put a project together where we were looking for a partner to build housing on three parcels. And so this was one of the parcels that was going to have an affordable housing project. We have a plan, we have a site plan that we've, the city had developed, that was going to be used, I think, or offered to a builder. But I think at that time, council, based on public input, said, let's take that one out of the solicitation. And so it was removed from the Scattered Site Project. The Scattered Site Project fell apart for other reasons. But again, it was originally part of the Scattered Site Project, and it was removed at the request of, I think, the citizens who wanted it to be put on a ballot measure. I think that was the reason council took it, took it off the project list.
Thank you. And is there a current solicitation still out there for the scattered sites?
There's not. So what we're doing is, we're working with our RAD partner, the Residential Assistance Demonstration, and thank you, Sarah Darzon. Sarah can jump in and help me here. But right now, we're looking at all of our assets as part of the RAD process.
Okay. And Ms. Dar, if you wanted to jump in, you're welcome to.
Thank you so much. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. So this parcel was actually acquired for the purposes of affordable housing from the developer who built the development directly across Schultz Pass Road. It was acquired with money resulting from the sale of other properties for the purpose of affordable housing. There is some general funding in there, but it was housing money that purchased the property. It was what the development team offered to the city to fulfill its contribution, its voluntary contribution towards affordable housing, as they brought the other project to reality. We then shared in the costs of bringing water under 180, as well as stubbing out all utilities to the site, paid for with money from the housing budgets. We, we shared in that cost, meaning that we paid the cost for that to be done, but they did the work so that we didn't have to remobilize when they were really putting utilities in across the street. So all the public improvements that have been performed on the site, as well as the acquisition money, came from a housing budget. It was acquired for the purposes of affordable housing and actually rezoned to its current zoning from community commercial for the creation of housing on that site. So it actually goes back before that RFP piece. That acquisition by the city took place right as the economy crashed in 2008, 2009, and nobody was building anything anywhere, which was why we ended up sitting on it for so long while our economy recovered and people then, again, made a foray into the development in our community again. And that's when we put it forward with the Scattered Site process. There was then public outcry about the use of that property for the purposes of affordable housing, and council ended up removing that property from the Scattered Site RFP before we published it and substituted in another property. So there's a quick nutshell.
Thank you. Yeah, I was aware of that. My question really is, like, what is this list? That's what I was really getting at.
So there's a list of properties designated for affordable housing by city council. We can, I can pull that. It was a council action a number of years ago. But also, this was acquired for the purposes of affordable housing. And since council pulled it, of course, not this council, a previous council, removed it from that RSOQ solicitation, and there has been community interest in not developing it for the purposes of affordable housing. Staff has been sitting back waiting for council's desire for this piece of property and possible direction.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Dar.
You're welcome. Let me know if I can answer anything else.
Appreciate it. Councilmember Shumoni?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Dar, and Mr. Foulk. And thank you, Councilmember Salas, for your leadership in bringing this to us. I'm really excited about this agenda item. You know, this is a conversation that Councilmember Salas, McCarthy, and I very, very well remember, because we probably received some 400 emails. And I might have been joking. Seriously, it was one of those really hot topics that had state and national attention. And to Vice Mayor and Mayor, get ready, you know, if we move forward with this, that's going to happen again. And it's going to be on us, as David so eloquently said, to really value and lead through the lens of the entire community, and, and understand that the lens of equity and location here, and that what Sarah was talking about, and all the investment the city has made leading into this. When I voted no on the request the last time we talked about it, Mayor and Council, to move forward with building here, it was because there was a ballot initiative in the works. That ballot initiative, I wanted to run its course. I really wanted to move forward with this discussion, but I wanted to respect the public input and engagement process. But since here we are years later, and nothing's moving forward, and we have declared a housing emergency, our workforce, as Councilmember Salas stated, you know, desperately needs us, Mayor and Council, I'm in full support. And I know we're not diving into a full discussion on this tonight, but I just wanted to state what I just stated. In moving forward, Councilmember Salas and staff, and everybody listening, you know, I'm hoping we can talk about options, Sarah and Dan, you know, options like partnering with Habitat, partnering with potentially housing solutions, the site plan that we've been discussing, et cetera, and really identify the best balanced approach. And I think it'll help the community digest what we're talking about here, not have the fear, right, Councilmember McCarthy, of like, five-story tall, crazy infill. Like, let's, let's show them what they, you know, what, what we're considering. Like, let's show them what they, you know, what we're considering and give them some ideas to, show them that it's not so bad. But, you know, Mayor, as you know too well and we know too well, often affordable housing is the last thing to get developed and the last thing to get prioritized. And here we are with an opportunity to correct the ship. Thank you, Councilmember Solis, and I support this fair.
City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor, Mayor and Council, I appreciate it. As Councilmember Shimonie stated, he made a very good point. We're not here to have a full discussion of it tonight under the rules of procedure. We can have some general discussion to get some information, but if this is to be moved forward, it's just here tonight to determine if there are three council members that want to move it forward for that discussion, so.
Thank you, City Attorney. Thank you. Well, I'm only hearing two right now in support of moving this forward. Councilmember Sweet?
I would like, I would like to move it forward. I think we need this conversation. I was very disappointed that the community didn't come forward with their plan. They had ample opportunity to do so, and I think it is appropriate for us to have this conversation. I do not want to predispose myself towards an outcome, but I think the conversation needs to continue.
Thank you, Councilmember Aslan. With that, it is moving forward. All right. We're now down to Agenda Item Number 14. This is public participation. Do we have anyone at this time? Nope. All right. Agenda Item 15, informational items, two from Mayor, Council and staff and future agenda item requests. All right. Councilmember Solis? Start with you.
I guess I'm first. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for everyone's information, I will be attending next week's meeting virtually, as I will be in Washington, DC, attending the National Association of Workforce, that's a mouthful, National Association of Workforce Boards Conference representing Arizona at the work, Coconino County Workforce Development Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McCarthy?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll jump in here. We had a really great meeting earlier today with the Army Corps of Engineers and BNSF. And honestly, being in these meetings for the last almost year and a half, it was the most productive one that I have seen. And I am super, super excited to see the coordination efforts that are happening right now, the technical folks getting together and the timelines in which they're talking, which was, I mean, seriously, a little bit of goosebumps on making sure we get this going and making sure we are getting shovels in the ground by next March. So with that happening, I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware that this, that the Rio de flag, though, a lot of technicalities, a lot of things going on with the flood mitigation efforts, that the conversations are moving in a very positive direction. So that was, that was my main bit. And let me see if I got anything else here. Aside from that, I'll leave it at that, the other things we've touched base on before. So, yeah. Vice Mayor Sweet?
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see, I have a couple of things. Next Monday, I will be making a proclamation at our state Capitol in honor of Water Awareness Month. This is a very big deal for me. Excited. Last week, I took a tour of the Flagstaff Wildcat Hill wastewater plant. And if you have not done that, Council, I would highly recommend it. And last, Councilmember Shimonie and I attended a virtual meeting with the Portland City Traffic Engineer Wendy Crowley. And we focused on discussing streets, and their focus in Portland is on human design. And they have an inverted triangle that they use with pedestrians at the top and single vehicle cars, single-person cars at the bottom. And I'm just wondering if it's time that Flagstaff maybe has our own conversation with our own community needs and figure out our triangle. So, thank you. It was a great week.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Shimonie. You look just alike. I mean, it's hard to... Do you copy? What's going on?
Can you hear?
No, I can't, yeah. You might want to turn off your camera. It's, yeah.
Okay. Well, now that it's going, it should be okay, but for whatever reason, there's a lag getting my mic on and off.
I think that holding your finger up really helped. That's what did it.
You know, I want to, I want to start off my comments. I have a couple of comments, so please stay with me just for a couple of minutes, Council and staff. You know, my first comment, I want to, you know, express an apology to Rick Barrett, you know, Trevor, our engineering team, City Manager, staff and council. Last Thursday at our retreat, I got frustrated and I let my emotions shine through in a way that I'm not proud of. You know, I'm still processing what happened at that retreat and how it all played out. But one thing became clear as I thought about this retreat more and more, and that is I have the utmost respect for you, city staff and leadership, along with you, city council members. And I want to treat you all with respect. And at times, I might felt towards either that meeting that I wasn't, and I want to own that and work on that. So I genuinely apologize and want to do better in my role. You know, the budget is the most important thing that we do as council members, and I take this position as we all do so seriously. And with all the pressures, I think it got to me. I know change is coming, and I appreciate everyone working on change within the city, internally and externally, and all of our leadership as council members. All right, got that off my chest. Going to what Vice Mayor Sweet said, you know, Councilman McCarthy was also able to join us along with members of staff. And Wendy, the Portland City Traffic Engineer, was amazing. Second time we've met with her, Mayor and Council. And just to rattle off a couple of quick takeaways for the group, their evaluation metric starts with CO2 reduction goals, transportation equity and justice, safety, mobility, asset management, and then the inverted triangle that Vice Mayor Sweet spoke to with the pedestrian at the top. I mean, it was music to my ears, and it was difficult to hear just because of how, you know, how amazing what they have in places. And Wendy made it clear, this didn't happen overnight, and it took decades to get to this point. But I'm hoping it doesn't take us that long to get there ourselves. She talked about person delay versus car delay, and that being a huge takeaway as to how they evaluate projects. I'm hoping our engineers are still listening. Person delay versus, rather than car delay. And really thinking who's benefiting and who's burdening. You know, I think that that's a really good question to ask. She talked about providing people options to how they travel and how that will, that has been resulting in people choosing not to drive, resulting in more capacity on the roadways for those who do choose to drive, making this a win-win. And then lastly, that their levels of service, when they talk to the public, City Manager and Mayor and Rick Barrett and team, they never talk about levels of service A through D or F or whatever. They talk about it through the lens of how much time, what's the impact on the individual? Okay? I think that's a big difference when we say it takes 20 seconds longer than this project's a D. I think that makes a big difference in people's minds, and I invite us to do the same moving forward if we can. And the last thing she said was that, you know, 20 years ago, trying to predict for 2020 and 20, in 2000, they could not predict 2020. So she was saying the modeling is difficult, and their modeling overshot the amount of cars they expected. So modeling is difficult, is basically the takeaway there. Next, I'll just say that on Fri, next week, next Monday, I'll be going down to Tucson and visiting America's rehab campus that has been talking to us about a project up here in Flag, and I'll be taking a tour. And, and, and just that, this Friday at 11:00 a.m., the City Frisbee Group is picking back up, and City Manager hopefully will be making his big debut. Whoop-whoop, he's on my team. And it's going to be a lot of fun, so shout out to CJ and everybody who's involved with that group, and everyone's invited to come play. And lastly, congratulations to all those who turned in their signatures and Mayor Deasy, Councilmember Solis, Councilmember Aslan, and all those in the community, Lauren Matthews and Pastor Daniel. Congratulations, you all worked hard, and I appreciate that. That's all I had. Good meeting today, and Mayor, great to hear the update about the Rio efforts today. That's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimonie. Councilmember McCarthy, did you add something in?
Yeah, I just want to say, I also attended that meeting with the Portland Transportation people. I was a few minutes late because I lost my internet at my home, so I just got on by phone. And, but I did listen in and actually made some comments, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Aslan?
I'm good tonight. Thank you.
All right. With that, meeting adjourned.